Well, I love a well-attended workshop. Usually, we don't get to see many people here during our workshops. So, let me call this workshop to order. Let me make a... The only announcement I'm going to make is I'm setting the timer to eight minutes. So, when you hear the timer go off, we're all going to look forward to your wrapping up. Because we're looking at the workshop ending fairly late into the evening and then starting a meeting that all by itself runs a full page. So, your indulgence in us is appreciated. Speaking of the timer, let me get that out. I'm going to just start off in order on the agenda. And I guess it's first would be Gene. And age-friendly... Oh, no, not Gene. But Gene... Oh, excuse me. No, we're going to... We're doing the Pledge of Allegiance and the recognition of members and the public comment. All will occur during the meeting and not during the workshop. So, the workshop is just to pick up on the items. Thank you very much. So...
Okay.
Gene Saunders.
The good news is, I think I've got it down to five minutes.
I'm a believer, Gene. I know you'll get the job done.
So, thank you. Age-friendly Saco has enjoyed...
Yep.
We have slides, right?
Our technical expert is trying to get this together. Oh, there you go.
You can go right to the second one, Karen.
Thank you. So, age-friendly Saco has enjoyed tremendous growth this past year, and we look forward to continued growth in the coming year, particularly in the domains of housing and transportation. We've seen our Handy Neighbor Program grow tremendously. And report that with the installation of Knox boxes and home modifications and home repairs, we've now served over 50 households. This is to help our older residents stay more safely in their homes as they age. Our Sand Bucket Program, last year, we had 30 participants. This year, we're happy to report that we had 128. And we only expect this program to continue to grow. We hosted a Habitat for Humanity program again this winter, and as a result, 18 of our households are a little bit warmer this winter. Based on feedback that we received from focus groups on transportation needs, we learned that some of our older residents were actually facing food insecurity issues by the end of the month. They also had difficulty with transportation, actually getting groceries. So, because of this, we partnered with the USDA to provide senior food boxes on a monthly basis. So, age-friendly volunteers are now picking up 30-pound boxes of food monthly and delivering them to over 30 residents that have registered for this program. In addition, because we heard that some of our residents are unable to get a ride in order to obtain groceries, we've partnered with Saco Parks and Recreation staff and are now providing shopping shuttles to two of our 55-plus communities on a monthly basis. Along with the driver for the van, we have an age-friendly volunteer that rides along to offer assistance with any mobility aids, as well as to help with groceries, et cetera. We continue to host all of our annual events, including our biannual dinner dances at the community center. Our Last Dance on March 16th had over 170 people in attendance. The night could be described as magical. It was really great. We also hold our annual wellness fair that will be this fall at the community center. We continue our work on trying to solve the on-demand transportation needs for our older residents. And we recently participated in a pilot project as a result of a small grant that we received from GoGoGrandparent. This is a virtual company that utilizes the services of a third-party rideshare platform to make these services more available to our older population. You'll be hearing more about this in the coming year. We now also have a very solid database. It has more than 400 contacts in it and allows us to match up our handy neighbor needs with our available handy neighbors, as well as provide us a mailing list for all of our ongoing communications. We have volunteers that staff our age-friendly office Monday through Friday for four hours a day, and they are there to answer any questions from our residents about how to find and connect with resources within our community. So, I call this next slide a low-cost, high-impact investment of $7,500 from the city of Saco. So, with these funds, they allowed us to support our volunteers and provide the protections for them as they provide services to our residents. These funds were also used to support the continued development of resource materials and mailings needed to keep our residents aware of our programs. These funds also assist in underwriting the costs associated with some of our public events, such as our dinner dances and fairs. In this very simple pie chart, you will see that the city funds piece of the pie is smaller than the grant funds that we received. And so, we continue seeking funding sources. And you'll see that we have in process these four grants. So, we're looking for a main community foundation grant to improve the acoustics in our gymnasium. It's very difficult with the acoustics in the community center, in the gym, at some of our events. Bangor Savings, we've asked for additional beach mat. The beach mats have been wildly popular, and so, we sometimes have the problem of people not able to get off the mats. So, we're looking to try and extend the beach mats through a Bangor Savings grant. We collaborated with Habitat for Humanity for a $10,000 grant to try and increase funds for home modifications and repairs. And we also collaborated with Saco Main Street to try and get funds to improve Saco Island Park, a location that is directly across from one of the communities that we serve on our shopping shuttles that could definitely benefit from a new public space. So, age-friendly has one more funding request, and that is to increase our request from $7,500 to $10,000. And that is because we have just recently started conversations with President Herbert at UNE about partnering to create a home share program for Saco residents. This involves having graduate students rent a room from the home of an older adult that might have an extra bedroom and would be interested in a little extra income, as well as companionship. In return, the student would pay a reduced rent and provide some additional assistance around the house. This collaboration came about after our initial budget request. So, we're asking for the additional $2,500. UNE is asking us to hold focus groups at the end of May, early June, to begin these discussions. So, am I doing time-wise? Am I over five? So, in closing, we want to thank the city of Saco for their continued support of age-friendly Saco and helping us make Saco a more livable community for all.
Thank you. It was under... You were a minute longer than you thought. You went out to six.
Six minutes? Darn.
We have questions to my right. Counselor Doyle.
Thank you. Ms. Saunders, thank you very much for your presentation and all you do for the community. The home share program, you're looking for an additional $2,500 to support the implementation of the program. Is that an ongoing cost yearly, or is that a one-time for the implementation of the program?
Yep. That's very hard to discern at this point, since we're just in the very early planning stages. So, there are some additional insurance costs associated with this program. There are also funds that would come in from fees associated with applicant fees. So, I can't really answer that at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Questions to my left? Counselor Copeland.
Thank you very much for all you do for our aging community. And the resources that you provide are incredible. I suggest anybody who is interested, go to your website. I'm sure you have a link on ours, on the city's website. There's some really worthwhile things that you're doing that impact individual lives. And I would... May I ask your volunteers to stand and be applauded?
Yes. Thank you. This is the team that makes it happen. And since I probably maybe have 30 seconds left, we're required, as an age-friendly community, to create an action plan for AARP, as well as for the World Health Organization. So, this is our plan. It has been approved by the World Health Organization. So, it will be on our website for everyone to be able to read.
Leave it to you to get WHO involved.
Get WHO involved?
World Health Organization, the WHO. Okay. We used to call them WHO. Okay. Excuse me. Counselor Minter, do you have a question?
I just wanted to make a statement that I have submitted a RAD on their behalf for the additional $2,500 in funding. So, it'll be popping up on budget@socomain.org.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions to my left? Seeing none. Mr. LaBelle, Jim LaBelle of the Biddeford-Saco Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a handout here.
Okay. I'll grab them up and pass four in each direction. Good idea. That's right.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am in my first year at the Chamber, and the Chamber is celebrating its 92nd anniversary this year. So, great longevity with the Chamber and a very consistent mission over the years to promote commercial business prosperity, as well as the civic, cultural, and educational interests of our community. We are a member-driven organization. The city is one of our core members. We have 380 members right now, of which Saco has 150 of the members. And we're really a hub for business and commercial activity throughout York County. So, we have members from New Hampshire, right up through Portland, and even north of that. But obviously, Saco and Biddeford are the core areas where most of our members are represented. We also have, you know, I think sometimes people think it's just for-profit businesses. Of the 380, I believe there are about 60 organizations that I would characterize as nonprofits or educational institutions. So, you know, this is really a big tent that we want all entities to be a part of and move forward together. You may have participated in Chamber activities in the past. If not, just a quick summary. We do a lot of promotional activities at the member level, and then promotional activities to try to drive more interest and activity in Biddeford and Saco as well at a holistic level. That support and promotion can be anything from training sessions that we do once a month, lots of networking activity. It's important for businesses to understand other businesses and meet other leaders in the community. We do ribbon cuttings for new businesses, and there have actually been quite a few of those in the last... In the six months that I've been in the role, which is exciting. There's been a lot of growth and entrepreneurial activity in both cities, which we're very happy to see. One of our bigger components that we do is our annual guidebook, and I did share that with everybody. It's distributed up and down the coast and throughout the visitor centers. Really, it's a, you know, our one big printed piece to provide information on the area, as well as give a listing of our members that support the effort. The city is, as I said, a great sponsor and always has been of the Chamber. The support that the city provides is a, you know, it's a fairly significant portion of our overall kind of ongoing expenses. And again, we're very appreciative of that. The support isn't just financial, though. Counselor Archer and the mayor right now are on our board and provide a lot of value and insight and help in terms of running the organization as two members of our 15-member Board of Directors. So, I just want to say it's a great time to be at the Chamber. There's just a lot of momentum right now, a lot of investment, lots of entrepreneurs. There's probably a new business or a new restaurant every week. So, it's been fun. Since I took over, one of the goals is trying to get us back in a financial standing that, you know, I think from a go-forward standpoint allows us to invest more. So, that's been a focus. The other focus, I would say, is, you know, when I talk to businesses and, you know, a lot of the members, their major concern is to fuel the growth that they want to see, they need more people. They need more qualified employees. So, that's something I hear pretty much wherever I go, larger companies, smaller companies. So, I view the Chamber, you know, one of the roles we can play, along partnering with Denise Clavett, for example, the city planning departments, is trying to help on that workforce development front. And I don't think there are any easy answers there, but we do have a coalition of about 25 folks that get together on a monthly basis to talk about ways we can help. And that's going to continue to be something that we focus on going forward. So, I'm here really just to say thank you, appreciate your support, love working with the team. The mayor, just, you know, from the time I started, has been very helpful, and Kevin and everybody, really. Saw Lynn over the weekend. So, appreciate the support. And if there are any questions...
Let's go right to the questions, then. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? And Mr. Sutherland, their request is already in the budget, is it?
Yes, it's been included as part of the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBelle.
Great, thank you.
Next up is the Coastal Waters Commission, and I don't see Jim Katz here. So, he's... Yes, that's right. He's not requesting any additional, so, I mean, they operate with a budget. Conservation Commission, ah, please, step forward. Nikki?
Close. Nikotakis. I'm Katie Nikotakis.
Katie Nikotakis.
Very close, yeah.
Almost.
And I did have a presentation.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Oh, no, 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 no. I was just, yeah, just curious. I sent it yesterday.
Oops.
Sorry.
Nope. It's okay. I can... I can just go without it. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. Okay. Great. So, my name is Katie Nikotakis, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Saco Conservation Commission. And I just want to thank you all for inviting us here tonight. And we are here to, yeah, request our budget funds, which I believe are $5,000. And we are a commission that has sort of been reformed in the past year. So, all of us that are currently... There it is. All of us that are currently on the commission are new within the past year. And so, we are really excited about our new energy to preserve and protect Saco's natural beauty for all to enjoy. So, maybe we can go to the next slide? Okay, so, these are the members of the Conservation Commission that are current right now. Our co-chair, Edward Chanet, was not able to be here tonight. And Thomas Clack, who works at University of New England, has provided a lot of leadership for us as well. And so, this is some of the things that we have accomplished in this most recent year. So, again, we have completely restarted this commission with all new members. There was a lot of turnover. From what I understand, that happened before. So, we have been reviewing the charter to make sure that we are upholding our responsibility and duty that we have to the city of Saco. And one of the big projects that we have undertaken that was in the charter is a green space information project. And so, the members from our commission have gone around to all of the green publicly-owned spaces in the city of Saco, have done a survey of them to see what sort of amenities they have, what sort of trails, state the trails are in. And we're compiling that data that we're hoping to put together in both a digital and paper map that's going to make these spaces more available and accessible for both the residents of Saco and guests that we may have. We've worked to develop relationships with city officials. So, at our most recent meeting, we had representatives from the planning and zoning organizations. Lynn Copeland, counselor, has been a really great resource for us. And we have been attending workshops that, to better understand our goals, mission, and what our responsibilities are as a conservation commission. So, our goals for next year, we are working on a Cascade Falls redevelopment project. We feel that this is one of the real gems in the Saco area is Cascade Falls. And at this point, when we did our green space survey, we found that the trails are just not super well-maintained right now. So, we've been working with the Saco Bay Trails Organization. We have met with Saco Bay, the Saco Parks and Rec Commission, to make sure that, you know, we have everyone on board to really, you know, renovate this space and make it something exciting that people are going to want to visit. Like I said, our goal is to create an online map to increase awareness and access to currently existing green spaces. So, we're going to take the information that we found in the survey, and we want to create something that's going to make it a little easier for people to visit these spaces. We're going to consider acquisition of new green spaces to benefit Saco residents and visitors. We all know that there's a lot of development going on in Saco. And while we do not want to necessarily restrict that, we want to just make sure that all development is done in an environmentally friendly way. We want to work with the planning board on some of these projects to make sure that they're approved in a way that's going to, you know, preserve the green and beautiful nature of Saco while also allowing us to grow economically as a city. And we want to develop some priorities and put input in for upcoming projects. So, we're really excited to have, you know, sort of gotten back to this commission, and we hope that you will consider our budget request. I guess that's all.
Thank you very much. Any questions to my right? Counselor Gay.
What do you think about banning plastic straws?
Well, that's something that's... Well, the commission, that's something that we have not really discussed so much on the commission. So, I certainly can't speak for the commission on that. I can say personally, off the record, you know, I feel like maybe that's something we should consider. I know Saco banned the plastic bags, and it seems like that has gone relatively well. So, yeah, I mean, that is definitely something that we should bring up at one of our next meetings, if that's something that you're considering. And we just want to, you know, again, we really want to work with the council and all of the other boards to make sure that, yeah, we're all moving in the same direction.
Thank you. Counselor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, thank you for the presentation. Just looking at the budget, your budget for $5,000. Currently, as of February in 2019, $400 has been spent out of $5,000.
Correct.
And then, going back to 2018, and I understand that this is a revitalization of this group.
Correct.
So, 2018 was zero spent. 2017 was 2225.
Yep.
2016 was 3293. And then, you have to go all the way back to 2015 to get to 5,200. So, do you anticipate spending all of $5,000 in this upcoming year? Or could it be reduced, and then we look at gradually increasing in the next coming years to benefit the whatever projects you have going on? And what I mean, I'm not trying to downplay anything, but I'd like to see a kind of like an itemized plan of how you're going to spend the $5,000.
Right.
Rather than just, well, that's the budget.
Right. Yeah, I certainly understand that. And I mean, I guess I just, you know, again, ask for... This is... None of us on the commission have gone through this process before. And so, you know, again, I appreciate your patience as we're sort of learning on the job. But I guess we do have some other large plans. Like, we talked at our last meeting also, when we were going through the process of looking at all the green spaces, one thing that really came up is the lack of signage on many of the properties that are owned by the city of Saco currently that are accessible to the public. There's no signage at all. And that's something that I know Parks and Rec mentioned wanting to work on as well. So, I don't know if that's something we could put the budget towards. And yeah, I certainly understand the concern that the council has in that we haven't used the budget funds recently. However, I can assure you that we are a much more committed group than we have been in the past two years. This Cascade Falls plan, we have someone from the main, someone, I can't remember what commission, the loss of commissions, but someone's coming to do like a trail survey that's going to cost us $300. So, we're going to use that money. We talked about it, our last budget, using some of our money to fund this GIS mapping that we're going to be doing to contribute to our online planning. And so, those are some of the big expenses that we see, are increasing signage to, again, increase accessibility to the spaces that we currently own, working on the, using the Saco GIS specialists and other agencies as necessary to be able to come up with our online mapping project. And then, really, this Cascade Falls plan, when Saco Bay Trails did an analysis years ago, it came up as $30,000, I think, or 3,000. I mean, it was some really large amount of money to redo that park. And so, I think we're just getting started on it right now with assessing what needs to be done. And I think there will be a sizable amount of work that will need to be done there.
Thank you. And my recollection is that our GIS officer was deployed for much of this current fiscal year.
Correct.
Which is how your spending for GIS didn't build up.
Exactly, yeah. And he came to our last meeting. Yeah.
Comments or questions to my left? Yes, Counselor Copeland.
Thank you, Katie, for that great presentation. I can tell you that in the past, the funds have been used to send campers to a 4-H camp that have been identified by the Saco Middle School Guidance Councilors.
Oh.
So, that was a couple thousand right there. And I know that there's a... I just had a, was in one of your subcommittee meetings right before this, and we talked about the online mapping. And I think that there's going to be some real costs there as well. But I applaud the work you're doing and really excited about your excitement. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Comments to my left? Yes, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you for your presentation. Hi. It's actually, unfortunately, not for you. It's for administration. In the past, Chamberlain had set aside or donated to the city $50,000 for the use for the Cascade Trails funds. I'm just wondering if those funds are going to be made available for the commission to use.
So, this question's come up a couple times.
Yeah.
The money that was put forward for the Cascade Falls fund went into the Open Spaces Special Revenue Fund. So, the money is there. It wasn't really tracked separately within that fund. It's just sort of sitting in the fund balance. But the fund balance and the Open Spaces bond is well north of $400,000. So, there's ample funding available to support an initiative to redevelop Cascade Falls. And I think, and you can correct me, that would go through Parks and Recreation, sort of, to steer that project.
Thank you. I mean, I've been chasing those funds for several years, so I'm hoping to finally get them, you know, allocated to their appropriate location.
Right, so we can actually spend it properly. So, thank you very much. Any additional questions to my left? Any to my left, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Katie. Next up, I don't expect anyone is here from the Eastern Trail, is there? Oh, you are. Oh, come on, come on down. And if you would introduce yourself, please. Oh, we have a handout.
So, four on that side and two on this side. Pretty fancy, huh?
Hi. Yes, thank you very much for the invitation here tonight. I'm Carol Brush. I'm the executive director for the Eastern Trail Management District.
I'm sorry, would you spell your last name?
B-R-U-S-H. Just think of trails and brushes and...
Absolutely right. How could I get that wrong?
So, thank you again very much for your support. The city of Saco has supported the Eastern Trail since 2001. We greatly appreciate it. I'm here tonight to give you a quick update and to see, to obviously ask for continued support in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to my right? Any to my left? Everyone, I was just on the Eastern Trail. Well, it's about two hours ago now, but...
Good.
It's very, it's a very nice trail in Saco.
Thank you.
So, we still have a portion to work out.
We do.
To be able to get from the trailhead on Clark Street to the river and then to the other side of the river.
And that's, yeah.
We will do that.
Yes, we will do that. And that's part of what I've, that's mainly what I'm here to talk about tonight, is some of the plans we've already started for that. I'm not sure, is that running by itself or...
It was.
It was. I'm like, oh, stop it. No, I don't want it to.
There we are.
All right. Soon. So, the Eastern Trail, just real now that I've lost a minute of my time. So, quickly, for those who may not be aware of the Eastern Trail, it is a 65-mile trail from South Portland all the way down to Kittery. About 33% of it is now complete off-road. We'll get to those sections in a minute. Since most of it is constructed on the old Eastern Railroad bed, it is flat, accessible, wide, it's ADA accessible. And as you can see from the pictures, people of all users, well, critters and people of all users are accessible for it. Next slide, please. Here we go. And all types of activities, next slide. And any time of year. It's really a beautiful resource. Each section is different, and each section is equally gorgeous. Next slide. Now for the graphs and charts, you know, so much for the pictures. So, the 22 miles are in seven communities, as you can see up there. The, oops, back a little bit on the bottom, that didn't come out too clearly. But what's in your packet is we redid an economic impact study, which in 2014 showed 90,000 users, in 2018 showed 252,000 users just on the off-road sections on those 22 miles. And that was done by counters and surveys. And that was done by counters and surveys. And from the surveys generated over $3 million of impact, economic impact to the communities along the trail. Next slide, please. So where are we now? So those green are the sections that I just talked about that are completed. The yellow are, as we call it, we're closing the gap going over the river and through the woods. The close the gap is in Scarborough. It's a 1.6-mile section that when it's complete, will take you from Bug Light all the way down, and it will be complete in 2020. I'm happy to say funding and design is complete, construction will start in the fall and finish in 2020. The next section is one near and dear to here, over the river. Currently from Thornton Academy, there is a gap and then it picks up again at Bitterford, and I'll address that in a second. And the last section that we've got on the boards that we're doing an active funding for now is the last 19 miles in the Unitil Corridor, from Kennebunk all the way down through the Berwicks. This year, we're focusing on 11 miles and in three months have raised $100,000 towards funding the survey and design of those 11 miles. Next slide, please. So back to where we are here, in 2011, that bridge went over Route 1 on a very snowy night that really gave Saco the access to go all the way up to Scarborough. And next slide. And that's what it looks like today, but with a lot more people on it. And next slide, please. So the expansion that we're talking about would be 3.1 miles, and that would ultimately be 16 miles more to the north and 6.2 miles to the south. So when that would be all completed, that would afford 25 miles of greenway. And next slide, please. How are we going to get there or where are we going to get there? So that green rectangle in the middle is Thornton Academy's field. If you look right behind it, thank you. If you look right behind it, you can see the trail comes to the left and then curves down and goes on to the streets. If you go back up to where it is behind there, you'll see a straight line going, nope, the other way. Let's see. So if you go slightly over, and that's where there's a lightly-used freight rail corridor that we really hope to be able to access. And next slide, please. That will then take us through Saco and over the river. That's an existing bridge. That's our high hopes. And next slide. That didn't come out very well. Where the arrows are is where the Down Easter comes in, in Bitterford, and from there, we'll probably go back onto the local streets up to Southern Maine Healthcare. And next, and that's too blurry. So next slide. How do we get there? So it all starts out every time with a bunch of us standing there saying, is this really feasible? That's representatives from the Eastern Trail, municipalities, and governmental agencies. And next slide. Taking a look at it, we really found that it was, it's quite usable. The railroad corridor is 66 feet, wide in most places, 88 in some, I believe. So that's a shot from Thornton Academy on the left and right near the river on the right. There's plenty of room to go in to the sides of it. The key is obtaining the permission from Pan Am. That's the existing bridge, and there would be room on the side of it for a path along the side of it. And next slide is a, obviously, it's a clip from the internet, but you can see right there, the cantilevered path along the side. That would be, that would be the least expensive and most viable option, given the permission. And next slide, you can hold it there for a bit. That would be the view from that bridge going down. If that bridge is not available for use, that's a pretty big spance, would add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the project. So our hope is, our hope is to be able to, where are we going from here? So we've had several meetings with, and cooperation and interest from the city of Saco, city of Bitterford. I've reached out recently to, this may be news to you, I've gotten support from Sweetser, Unitil, Thornton Academy, who am I missing? Southern Maine Healthcare, Representative Ryan Fecto, Bitterford-Saco Chamber of Commerce earlier tonight for letters of support. And my, so my goal is to get those letters in place, and as soon as budget season is over, the cities and the ETMD will reconvene and try to set that meeting. And last slide.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Counselor Copeland.
Thank you for coming here tonight. The Eastern Trail is a great resource, and we're really proud to be a part of it. I do have a question about going alongside of the railroad. I know the trestle is separate, but how do you propose to navigate, even if it's a wide corridor with the train right there?
That's, I'm, well, in looking at, we work closely with the Rail to Trails Conservancy, and the existing trails with rail have fences, usually the chain link fences, and actually provides a better, more protection than what is on there now, as witnessed by that horrible accident last week.
Thank you.
Any others to my left? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Economic Development Commission, Betty, I don't see Betty here. So that doesn't mean we're not going to fund her. So anyway, next is Historic Preservation Commission, Kelly. And you have a PowerPoint.
Historic greetings to the mayor and city council. I am Kelly Archer, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. On behalf of the HPC members pictured here, we thank you for your support as you entrust us with the duties, responsibilities, and commitment towards our two historic districts, eight landmarks, and the city of Saco. With your support of $5,500, next slide. We would like you to know more about us and what we do. I would like to mention at this time that you did approve for us to move forward for a preservation consultant for 90 Temple Street. And that would be determined, the planning department is working on the RFP right now. They wanted to get through the budget cycle, and we should have answer back by May 15th on the process, the procedure, and what has been done. We would be probably looking at a RAD and looking at a CLG grant for 6040, and then that's our account number for the Historic Preservation Commission, once we know what that figure might be. Next slide, please. The major influences for the HPC now is we have a new board welcoming our new city planner, Emily Cole Prescott, which you probably know that has historic preservation experience from the state of Connecticut. We're focusing on advocacy, education, and outreach, attraction, marketing, and heritage tourism. Where we have enhanced collaboration with the lecture series with Bitterford, and we've had Bitterford inquiries and we're having discussions. There's concerns about the Bitterford-Saco Mills District that they are addressing with us as far as what we're going to do about the six properties that are located in Saco. That's an ongoing conversation. And there has been an inquiry for an archaeological study of Saco Island, where the waters is, and that is in conversation with the city planner. We're ramping up the marketing and heritage tourism efforts with signs, plaques, and replacing the 2007 weather-beaten street panels with internationally-recognized museum and the streets panels and program. And of course, we're always moving forward with the 90 Temple Street endangered property with activities, be it the car show, and then looking forward to the preservation consultant that will work on it. Development activity within the historic district is on the rise because of backlots and infill opportunities. And we're also reviewing the comprehensive plan, the HPC zoning ordinance and design guidelines for discrepancies and make recommendations for changes, as well as provide forward-thinking, solar panels, outdoor utilities, density concerns. Next slide, please. Maintaining a high level of service through professional development from the federal and state level by attending national conventions and to state workshops. And next slide, please. Delving into tax incentives, community revitalization, rightsizing, economic benefits, protection to technical assistance. We are locally immersed into the design review ordinances. Next slide, please. With their ordinances, the guidelines, and the standards that we use in hearing certificate of appropriateness applications. We also have a fun grant writing and performance with the HPC. We were awarded a CLG grant for the recent lecture series. We continue to share the story of the long road home between Alton and Lenora Seavey's historic landmark, endangered 90 Temple Street, and their beloved 1940 Cadillac LaSalle, now owned by Larry Tribble of Connecticut Southern Auto Auction. We continue to increase the historic visibility with the use of signs. Next slide, please. That was on the lecture series that I just mentioned. It was very successful. And we had, you can back up one more. I'll just, with 14 speakers, over 240 attendees, people do want us to have more lecture series and more workshops coming forward. Next slide. This is part of what we're doing to marketing and promoting 90 Temple Street. We did have the car, we have the booklet, we have the T-shirts, we have the mugs, and we have the note cards. We're generating increased tourism and interest in order to preserve this, and we'll get into the gap of that 90 Temple Street project in a moment. Next slide, please. We are continuing to increase the historic visibility with the use of signs. In this past year, you've noticed that 12 signs are now, as you enter on the left, as you enter into this historic district. Above, we have a Preserve America sign. We've been part of that program for over 12 years now. And we do have a sign, but we do need to have the sign at the end across from run-of-the-mill the post. That needs some repairs to be done, and the painting next to Thornton Academy needs those posts as far as the "Welcome to Saco." We should put Preserve America on there. And then to the right, we're doing a new project, 52219, we have a presentation discussion of doing the district and eight landmarks, plaques for businesses and homes. And we would also like to do three historic district signs with arrows. Be similar to the one on the left, but it would be smaller and it would be on Elm Street. So when you go down Storer Street, Thornton Street, and Pleasant Street, it tells you, historic district, go that way. Then, next slide, please. This is the museum and the streets that we're in communication with. Bitterford and Old Dorch should have this program. We'd be replacing the 12 to 15 signs that are out there now. And that would help with heritage tourism. This is an international program. People know that from their phones. If the town is available with museum and the streets, we now have their dollars coming to downtown. Next slide, please. And then these are our goals and challenges in this upcoming year. The Seavey story continues. We need to fulfill that $400,000 gap that's been discussed over about a year and a half through investors, fundraising, grant opportunities. We really want to get education and inception out there to not only the 225 properties, historic properties, but to get it to the realtors, sellers, and buyers to know, so everyone knows what they're purchasing in a district zoning overlay of historic. And we would like to do training workshops, letting people learn how to glaze their windows or giving us as a commission a workshop to do, to do better. And then we're seeking grant opportunities, seasonal lectures, walking tours, and the Friends of Rendezvous Point Cemetery, where we want to do a ground-penetrating radar. There's about 400 to 500 souls that are buried there that we know of, and we have about 500 pieces of document that, on the people that are buried there that we know of. And then, of course, we are thinking about adopting landmark tax incentives, and thank you very much for supporting the Historic Preservation Commission.
Just a moment, Kelly. Any questions to my right? Yes, Counselor Gay.
Hey.
Just a moment, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Archer, thank you very much for your presentation and all you do for the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, excuse me. Just looking at the line item budget here, we're looking at a current FY '19 approved is zero. You're looking for a $5,500 allocation, but the previous five years, there's zeros. So I wouldn't be, I'd be remiss in my duties if I did not ask the same question I asked of the Conservation Commission to kind of explain and map out what that $5,500 is doing. Or was it possible to do a smaller amount and then gradual work your way up to a $5,500 allocation?
I love your due diligence. However, about a year and a half ago, when I became Chair, I started a six-month process on the budget. We had four different accounts, with the help of Glennis, who can help explain this. We have been receiving the money for $5,500 to $7,000 over the last 20 years of the HPC. They cleaned up two of the items, and we have one lapsing fund, one non-lapsing fund. Yours is the lapsing fund of $5,500. We do expend that, we do get CLG grant money of 6040, and then we also have the expenses that are ongoing. And now to Glennis.
Yeah, thank you for that. So as I had mentioned in my introduction to the budget presentation a couple weeks ago, the Historic Preservation Fund was one of the commissions that got moved out of the Planning and Economic Development Department into supported entities. The initiative being to really identify our supported entities as a complete and consistent way in the supported entities budget. For an understanding of the historic expenditures of the Historic Preservation Commission, I would direct you to page 103 of the budget book, where the Historic Preservation Commission is identified under account number 10454, 50483. And for the last couple of years, the Historic Preservation Commission spent $7,800 in 2017 and $6,400 in 2018. So they've consistently definitely spent the $5,500, maybe a little bit more, which is fine. They've done some amazing work. Going back to 2016 and 2015 is where the expenditures fell off, and I believe that's because for a while, the Preservation Commission just didn't have an active board.
Thank you. In the future, you know, if it's confusing to us, it's confusing to those folks at home, and it may just be a little asterisk next to this that says, hey, this was moved out of this in this year, just to let people know what is going on, because you're throwing a lot of information at folks at one time.
Certainly. We'll try and see if we can get that put into the approved budget book as a revision.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Any questions? Comments? Counselor Menthorne.
Do we have any TIF funds that might be able to use to assist some of this stuff? Have we noted in some of our TIF districts that historic preservation items? I believe there were in one.
We can, we can have, we can do a little research and answer later. Write that as a question.
Excuse me, Mr. Sutherland.
I have an opportunity to maybe save some money for having someone teach other people how to glaze. I have a historic home, you can send them over, I'll teach them how to glaze windows, and we're all set.
Wonderful.
All right. A nice work-study program.
Can you re-point his chimney, too?
Yes, I can.
At 15 North Street. Is that the address? Okay. So, oh, excuse me.
Because you mentioned that, I'm not fully familiar with TIFs, but what about the downtown development? Would we be considered that, since most of the buildings are in that area?
I think we can do some research and get an answer back to the council and the Historic Preservation Commission about what we can use those funds for related to historic preservation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none? Any to the right? None? Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thanks again for all your support.
Sir, Saco Pathfinders, if you would please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Folks, my name is Doug Doherty. I'm the current president of the Saco Pathfinder Snowmobile Club. We're located out on Heath Road in North Saco. We've been around for close to 50 years now. We became incorporated in 1972. We built the clubhouse in the mid-'70s, did an addition in the '80s and then the '90s. We started off, back then, we, you know, in the city of Saco, we maintained roughly 30, 32 miles of snowmobile trails. We call them snowmobile trails because we use them primarily, but other people out there, dog walkers, out on the Loudon Road, a lot of horses use our trails. Actually, we're on their property, so we use their horse trails. About 15 years ago, Scarborough closed, the Scarborough Snowmobile Club. We inherited their trail system. And about five years ago, Dayton closed, we inherited their system. So as the club has basically been able to maintain itself, the clubs around us, unfortunately, age, lack of volunteers, have closed. We didn't want to see those trail systems go to waste, so we kind of took them over. We took in some of their equipment, which We took in some of their equipment, which was serviceable. The rest of it was disposed of. Well, annually, when you register a snowmobile, it's about $45. That all goes to the state, then it gets divvied up among DIFW, wardens, different services. Department of Conservation, Agriculture, and Forestry ends up sending back to you guys $6.62 for every snowmobile registered as a person who lives in the town of Saco. So I'll go back to a couple of years ago. Those funds were $3,071.68. Last year, the 17, 18-year registration year was $2,833. So those are the funds we ask the town for every year. Ideally, the state would like you to put those funds back into a local snowmobile club. Same with ATV clubs. Unfortunately, around here, we don't have ATV clubs, pretty much because all of our trails are wet. So every inch of trail that we maintain is privately owned. We do not own an inch of trail system in Saco, Scarborough, or Dayton, and a little stretch in Bitterford. Every bit of it is privately owned, so we have to go to those landowners and request permission to cross their land. Typically, with snowmobiling, hopefully, you have nice frozen firm ground. It does minimal damage, basically no damage to the underlying land, whereas four-wheelers, it's thawed out, and it's a sloppy mess out there. So most of the landowners don't want four-wheelers, so that's why we, there was a push to incorporate us with an ATV club, and we said, no, we want to stick strictly to the snowmobile side of it. So roughly, we have, on a good year, we'll have a hundred to 110 members. This year wasn't a good year, believe it or not. With the amount of snow that was up north, record-setting snow, we didn't have it here along the coast. It seemed like every time we'd get six or eight inches of snow, we'd get followed up by an inch of rain, which is the worst thing possible for snowmobiles. I don't know if any of you snowmobile, but it just makes a real sloppy mess, and it's impossible to groom. It's impossible to work with. So we didn't have a great season here. We got some riding in, and if you went towards Hollis, that's where you started seeing the better snow. And the further west you went, you started seeing better and better snow. So we take, and we have members, it's a $35 annual fee to become a member of the club. And as a member, you're part owner. You get a key to the club. You can come in and use it anytime you want. Fifteen of that dollars goes to the Maine Snowmobile Association. They're the association that looks out for us. They lobby the state. They stay on top of new laws that are coming out, good or bad, and they lobby for the snowmobiler. So $20 stays with the club. So typically, in a year, we'll have around $2,000 that are generated for us, for those Those funds, the funds that we get from you folks, well, we do get some from Scarborough as well, where we maintain their system, and we do get some from Dayton as well. We get their membership as well as Scarborough's. Those funds go to maintaining our facility out on Heath Road, maintaining our equipment. Sadly, we haven't been able to buy new equipment in many, many years. Our newest piece of equipment is a 2003 Scandic. We have three of those. We have a Viking and a Polaris, which is in, they're from the nineties. We also have a 2000 Blazer with tracks on it. So if you have ever seen that out there, it's kind of cool. It's a, it's a snowmobile truck. And then each of those machines have a drag behind it, and they weigh anywhere between 1,000 pounds to about 2,500 pounds, and that's what we use to groom the trails. So all of that equipment does cost to maintain. Oil changes, gasoline when we are running them. The drags are all steel, so if any of you have walked the trails out in, anywhere in southern Maine, you know there's roots and rocks. If we catch on one of those, we can break something, so there's costs that go along with that. So we're kind of like a net-zero club. We try to spend what we take in. In the past years, we've had lawnmower racing out there, which we actually featured on Northwoods Law. Counselor Gay has participated in that, actually. Last year, we tried to make a run of it. We had, we didn't have the volunteers, so we had to close the season down, unfortunately. This year, we're trying to make a go of it again. We have some new energy behind that. The years that we did run the snowmobile, I mean, the lawnmower racing, were very good years. We made a lot of money on it. We were able to dump good money back into the club and back into the equipment. But again, that dried up last year. Hopefully, we can do something this year. So anyway, that's my little take on it. We'd appreciate the funds that are sent to you annually. This year, it's around $2,800 for last year. I know the budget said $2,655, but I think that was an older number, but anything you can do is a huge help.
Thank you, Doug. Just a second. Any questions to my right? Yes, Counselor Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that you guys do a good job, out back at my house anyway, for maintaining the trails and bridges.
Well, thank you. We tried.
Additional questions to my right? Seeing none to my left. Counselor Copeland.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for providing, you know, an outlet for some recreation. It's definitely a positive thing for our community. Is there a trail map or something that's available to the general public, or do you have to become a member? Is it on your website? And I don't see any trail map.
Yeah, we do have trail maps. We have them for sale. We don't give those away.
Okay.
But I can provide them to you. The current trail maps, we worked in conjunction with Buxton, so they are snowmobile trail maps. So it shows gas stations, food. It has our trail system on one side of the map, and Buxton's on the other side, but I can certainly get you those.
I would really like one. And the other thing that you touched on was that the quads are, or the four-wheelers, whatever, are messy and all that, and it's wet trails, but I don't know if you heard, but we're trying to build a greenbelt around here, and, you know, maybe people could walk gently across the properties, so.
Yeah. Are they available for hiking?
They are, yeah. They're available year-round. In the fall, we have a lot of hunters out there. That's why when we do trail work, we don't go out during the week or on Saturdays. We're strictly on Sundays. Once hunting season shuts down, we are going out on, you know, other days. But there's a lot of mountain bikers out there, a lot of dog walkers. That north end of Saco, over by Loudon Road, you do have some horse farms over there. So, you know, typically in the fall, we may see the kids out there riding their horses.
It's just wonderful to see everybody outside. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing, oh, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you for the presentation. It's good to know, you know, what the organization does. Counselor Copeland kind of stole my question as far as if they're open year-round. But as a follow-up, do you have to be a member to use them? Do you have to pay that membership?
No.
So even if you're a snowmobiler, you could use those trails?
Absolutely, yeah. We encourage people to become members. If they park in our parking lot, we do have about two acres out there, so we have a big parking area for snowmobile trailers. People will come in from all over southern Maine and park there. We've never towed anybody, and there's big signs that says, "Member parking only," and we encourage them to become members, and a lot of people will. And those that even don't, they'll leave a $20 bill in the tip jar for saying, you know, thank you for letting us use your trails. Ideally, there's a bill in front of the House right now that other states force you to become a member of a snowmobile club. I shouldn't say force you. If you're not a member, you're, it's an additional registration fee. So it's six and one-half dozen of the other. Do you become a member, or do you pay that fee? So there's a bill right now in the House. I don't know if it's gone through committee yet, but it's being proposed. New Hampshire does it, and I believe Vermont does it. So those would be huge additional funds, because we call those people freemobilers. They spend an enormous amount of money on snowmobiles and equipment and trailers, and then they don't want to join a club, so. And it's not about helping us out, it's just getting involved and being aware. If you're a member of a club too, the statistics show that you're less prone to be in an accident, which is, if you follow the news, is quite a few fatalities in the state. Generally, those people don't belong to clubs and are unaware of certain rules, and so.
So Counselor Menthorn.
I just want to thank you for taking over the trails from our sister communities, and I think somewhere between our city administrators dip in the ocean and our lawnmower racing counselor down there, there's an opportunity for a fundraiser this summer. I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions to my left? Any additional questions to my right? Seeing none, Doug.
Thank you very much, folks.
Nice to meet you. Dallin. There she is. Saco River Corridor Commission. How are you this evening?
Very well, thank you. How are you, Mr. Mayor? Yes, hello. Thank you, everyone. I'm the executive director for the Saco River Corridor Commission. My name's Dallin Hauser. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak to you guys a little bit about our programs. So I'm here to speak to you about how citizens of our own communities work to preserve land and water quality. Next slide, please. Okay, so the commission got its start in 1971 when concerned citizens from this area approached the state legislature with concern for improperly planned development and overcrowding that would lead to the environmental degradation of the river or the lands adjacent to the river. Next slide, please. Now, the legislature established the Saco River Environmental Advisory Committee in '71, and the committee conducted an investigative survey where they surveyed every landowner along the corridor, and an unusual amount of replies, a 51% indicated that there was widespread concern for the future of the river. When asked, do you think there should be land-use controls to prevent overcrowding and protect the various public and private interests? Eighty-eight percent of people responded with yes. They believe those extra controls were necessary. Next slide, please. So the legislature did heed these concerned citizens and actually established the commission in 1973 as a quasi-state organization that could maintain the power and anonymity of a state agency, but at the same time be carried out and enforced, implemented by our own members of our own communities in a volunteer capacity. Thereby, having members sit on the board from each of these neighboring towns, well, development that is affecting your neighborhood downstream, well, they're going to know, because we meet every month and discuss permit applications for review. So when the commission was established, the river system classification has gone from a Class C to a Class A and now supports our drinking water. Our jurisdiction is 500 feet from the Saco-Ossipee and Little Ospee Rivers. As you can see, that's our jurisdiction up there, highlighted. Twenty municipalities are a part of the commission with two members sitting on the board. For each municipality, we're lucky enough to have Barry Noble and Richard LaRue serving as the Saco representatives. Our jurisdiction is different than Chapter 1,000 for DEP shoreline zoning, and that is only 250 feet from the water body, whereas we're 500 feet from the rivers and up to 1,000 feet in the 100-year floodplain. Next slide, please. The purpose of the commission is to protect the water quality of the river, the lands adjacent, as well as to preserve public health and quality for the state of Maine. We do that by implementing all sorts of rules and regulations to ensure properly planned development. Next slide, please. Okay, so there are three program elements of the Saco River Corridor Commission. Next slide, please. The first being our land-use regulatory program, whereby anybody that has a development project for review in our jurisdiction must come to the commission for a permit on top of their local towns. So these are all pictures of, in the last year, people who have come for a permit. Now, the commission reviewed approximately 100 permits last year. Out of those 100 permits, only 15 of those were not granted in a one-month timeframe. Those 15 permits that were not granted in a one-month timeframe were not granted because information was missing from their application, or it was a very complex project that may adversely impact the water quality of the river. Otherwise, we do turn around the permits pretty quickly. Next slide, please. Now, commission review does trigger looking at the soils on site, any potential erosion or sedimentation concerns, potential flood damage, the soils that are currently on site, as well as many other factors besides just setback and frontage. Now, we do have a very unique regulation, something unique in its entirety to the commission, is the aggregate limit system, whereby in the limited residential district, not the GD district, but LRD, where housing mainly is, you must meet a 500-foot system. So as you can see on the image, if you have 400 feet of shoreline, you must be 100 feet setback. Right next to that, if you have 250 feet of shoreline, you must be 240 feet setback. Next slide, please. And this rule is to prevent just having 100-foot setbacks, such as shoreline zoning allows, which creates a high visual impact. Next slide, please. This is another example of the 100-foot setback, which also the commission does apply in the general development districts. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is an example of the 500-foot aggregate limit system at work. So the houses are spread out, the vegetative buffer is preserved, and the main natural shoreline is able to remain preserved, and the visual and scenic character of the corridor is also being preserved here. Next slide, please. So when the commission was established, there were three districts established along with the commission. The general development district, which was mainly for areas that were intensively developed, then the limited residential district for mainly housing, and the resource protection district, which is mainly for areas that are critical to fish and wildlife or habitat or within areas of the 1,000-year floodplain. And areas of the corridor that extend the entire width of the 100-year flood or 1% annual chance flooding, there is a no-new-construction rule, and that is to prevent flooding, loss of life, or property and damage. However, there are clauses to deal with lots that were established prior to the lot or grandfathered lots. Next slide, please. We have been working very diligently to transcribe our maps from 1973, that when you pick them up, they flake off in the wind, to a new Arc Digital GIS mapping system. We did meet with both cities, Saco and Bitterford, the code enforcement officers, city planners, and economic development directors. We had a very productive meeting where we discussed the maps and what we can all do to communicate a little bit better and be on the same page with permitting, with our different rules. So I'd be happy to discuss the maps with you all at another time. They're somewhat complicated, but we did carve out our own layer just for Saco and Bitterford as well. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so the funding that we get, the $10,000 appropriation we get from you all, supports our water quality monitoring program, which is carried out through a QOP, Quality Assurance Protection Plan, that is implemented by the EPA, approved by the EPA, the DEP, and the New Hampshire counterpart, which is New Hampshire DES. We run a joint program with Green Mountain Conservation Group, looking at also the headwaters where the Saco River originates in New Hampshire. Next slide, please. Our program runs throughout the summer bi-weekly. We test for 35 sites along the river from Conway down to Saco-Bitterford. Six of our sites are in Saco and Bitterford, showing the importance of this area of the river. We do have several volunteers participating, and the bulk of the funding goes towards the equipment costs, also the laboratory testing. We pay a coordinator to handle all of the coordination, and also, we are, have just hired a new program manager with a microbiology degree in the hopes to provide more useful information to the towns. And this program is mainly to establish a baseline health indicator for the river, as well as to keep an eye on the health of the river and determine if land use is affecting that. Next slide, please. Our third educational program component is, our third program component is an educational program component. We're working with the Sockpee Valley Middle School to, this year, and they'll be testing on the Little Ospee. Next slide, please. And one of those permits, we reviewed last year, the waters, which is important to you all. We did review from May to August, and through that review, the commission did get an additional 150 trees in the buffer, scaled back the marinas, removed one building from the 100-foot setback, and also was looking at the contaminated soils on site to determine how those could most effectively be dealt with. This project was tabled at the request of the applicant only. It was not tabled due to environmental concerns of the commission, even though that's what's been stated in the press. This was only tabled because the applicant requested us to. This was only tabled because the applicant requested us to, to be able to complete their application. Next slide, please. Now, the commission has rulemaking changes pending. This is in part due to concerns expressed by city leadership in Saco and Bitterford. One is changes to allow for a riverwalk without a variance. So, the commission has always been supportive of a riverwalk, it's just that we have no mechanism to permit one. We only have something to allow for a, oh, sorry, to allow for a six-foot meandering pathway. So, we're making those changes to allow for the riverwalk. And then, also changes to 107, which is mainly to allow for the reconstruction of existing non-conforming structures, just as DEP Chapter 1000 has updated. So, I've gone over my time, so if you guys have any questions at all, please reach out to our office at any time.
Just a moment. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Councilor Copeland.
Just a quick comment that you guys do a great job. We appreciate the oversight, and we appreciate your flexibility.
Absolutely, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Shirley. Please introduce yourself in eight minutes.
Hi, thank you so much for inviting us here.
To wrap, before you have to wrap up.
Shirley Bowen, I'm the Executive Director of the Seeds of Hope Neighborhood Center. We are a drop-in center and do a lot of things. Although we're located in Bitterford, we serve Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Dayton, Arundel. People come in from all over to ask for help. I want to just quickly give you a report from the funding that you gave us last year, which was incredibly helpful. Part of the funding went toward our new security deposit revolving loan fund, which has really made a huge difference, specifically in Saco. We've given out 14 loans since July, and four were to folks who actually lived in other towns but wanted to live in Saco. So, four loans to current Saco residents now. So, we've given out a total of 3225. So, we have, of that 5,000, we have 1,775 remaining to be able to grant for someone else. And I'm very happy to say, it, overall, of the 14, we certainly are having some folks that getting repayment has been a challenge. All of the folks who relocated to Saco are making timely, every-month payments. So, I have every reason to believe that fund will just keep replenishing itself because they've been very diligent about doing that. Of the four loans that we have made for folks in Saco, three of them are families. So, this isn't just affecting an individual, it's a family. Families who, on some of the instances, were very interested in having their children in the Saco school system. And, you know, I don't really collect comments about why from one school system to another because I think they're all great, but I wanted you to know that. The other half of the funds you give us, the other 5,000, is, goes toward our feeding program. We average anywhere from about 1,300 to 1,500 meals per month. Our budget for food for the year is about $40,000. So, you all are funding about one-eighth of our food that we serve. We serve breakfast and lunch five days a week. And we also have free clothing. We run a career resource center. And we're also, there's two initiatives we've been very active with this year in the community. The first is, we've been very active addressing homelessness. We made a presentation before Bitterford City Council in December because we discovered that after 8:00 in the city of Bitterford, I don't know if it's true here, but after 8:00, there was no public bathroom anywhere, and there are a number of folks who are living outside and had no access. The Bitterford City Council responded quickly, and a porta potty was put in Mechanics Park. Porta potty is a good first step, and I'm hoping and continuing to advocate that maybe something a little more permanent could be available. We are the home base for the point-in-time homeless survey. This past year, we found, we're for Northern York County, so not just Bitterford again, other communities as well. We found 11 individuals who were completely living outside, and another 22 who were couch surfing. Those numbers, we know from talking both to others we know who are homeless, are significantly under-reported. I know that we gave out over 20 winter sleeping bags this past winter, thanks to some incredible generous folks getting it to us. So, it is still a real challenge. The other initiative that we have been involved in is working with the initiative that Jim talked about with the Chamber on Workforce Development. Because we have a career resource center, we're really committed to try to hear from employers what skills are lacking in employees so we can help address that, and also from employees what they need in order to get jobs. And we offer things like professional-level clothing if they need that, coaching around resumes, getting ready for interviews. And we even have a salon in Bitterford who will give folks for free, you know, a haircut, makeup, whatever they need to just feel good about themselves to move into a working environment. So, we really appreciate your support. We're asking for the $5,000 again for the food part of the program because we are still replenishing, and I think that will continue the security deposit program.
Thank you very much. Any questions to my right? Yes, Councilor Gay.
Just a comment. Thank you very much for helping the people in need.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to my left? Councilor Copeland.
Thank you for the good work that you do to help people who are in difficult times get through it. What can people do in terms of, you mentioned, professional clothing? So, is there, do you have a drive at some point? Do you have, how can, other than the city as a whole, how can individuals help you?
We take clothing donations. We describe it as new or gently-used clothing, and people will, actually, more people have started giving to us because they know that for our folks, even goodwill is too expensive. So, we do have people regularly bringing in both regular clothing and professional. And I have a network that if someone has a specific size that we don't have in stock, because we don't have a huge amount of professional clothing, I can send out an email, and I can almost always meet someone's need with size, or, you know, if someone needs their, for their job, to have black pants for whatever it is, we can almost always meet that need. But we always take clothing donations. We're open Monday through Friday, 9 to 1, and if you have several bags, our volunteers come out and carry them in, and they're, you know, we sort through everything to make sure it's okay, and then we make it available.
And what is your address?
35 South Street in Bitterford.
Okay, do you have a Facebook page or something?
We do. We have a website and a Facebook page.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks so much.
And, oh, Councilor Smart.
Thank you, and just to follow up on that, as far as clothing donations, is it just adult clothing, or do you, do you have a need for children's clothing as well?
We do, yes. We accept all ages. We're mostly an adult program, but we have a large section of kids clothes, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional questions to my left? To my right? Thank you very much, Reverend Shirley. Next up is, I don't know if, Southern Maine Agency on Aging, Meals on Wheels, and Ashley is here. Liz, I'm sorry, Liz, okay. I thought she was, Councilor Johnston went on a ride-along. So, if any council-
Ashley Perron, yes. She, I'm sorry, she manages our Bitterford meal sites. Yep.
All right, so, Ashley and Lily were the ones that I ran into, so.
Lily's a rock star. She's been there for a very long time.
She is a rock star.
Yep.
And so, anybody who would like to go on a ride-along, any councilors that would like to go on a ride-along on Meals on Wheels, we can arrange that.
We have a-
It's a couple of hours in the late morning. You're back sometime afternoon, but it's not, only during the week.
Weekdays, Monday through, excuse me, not Monday through Friday. We deliver on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then, every year, Meals on Wheels America organizes a Community Leaders Day where we encourage community leaders to come and do a ride-along. So, it can be on that day, or it could be on any other day that you just reach out to us and we'll coordinate something. Again, my name's Liz, here from the Southern Maine Agency on Aging. I'm not sure that you're all familiar with what we do at SMA, or the scope of services that we provide, but we were founded in 1973 under the Older Americans Act. We serve over 20,000 residents of York and Cumberland County every year. Last year, I'll just get right to the Saco information. Last year, we served 660 Saco residents through a number of different services valued at $192,720. One of our largest programs is our Information and Resources Program. 358 Saco residents took advantage of that last year. It's staffed by licensed social workers who work with seniors and their families in person, over the phone, or in our office to do benefit screening and connect clients to available resources and in the community. Sometimes it's Shirley's programs, and also all the great work that our age-friendly community, and age-friendly Saco community programs are doing as well. 137 Saco residents last year participated in Medicare and insurance counseling services that we offer. A lot of times, that results in hundreds and thousands of dollars of yearly savings on prescription costs and other insurance coverage savings. We actually offer one-on-one appointments regularly right here in Saco at the Dyer Library. 36 Saco residents received support through our Family Caregiver Support Program. We have support groups, client-led support groups, and then we also have evidence-based programs specifically designed for people who are caregiving for someone with dementia. And that's to help them develop coping strategies, ways of being a better caregiver, any number of ways that could help someone in that situation. 138 residents participated in our congregate dining programs, community cafes, and as-you-like-it. They received 1,458 meals through those two programs, and we also offer an as-you-like-it site right here in Saco at Rosalinda's Restaurant. 16 Saco residents last year participated in 99 AgeWell program classes, and we offer, our AgeWell, Center for AgeWell Programs offers evidence-based prevention programs for falls prevention and chronic disease and chronic pain self-management. Over the few recent years, we've offered those programs and used sites in Saco to help recruit for those programs, including Paul Halesland House, Maine Healthcare at Home, Trinity Episcopal Church, and that covers it. But they've, they may have offered space where we, where we held the classes, any number of collaborations. Nine Saco residents participated in our Main Senior Games Program, which offers yearly athletic events. One Saco resident received 217 hours of respite through the Family Caregiver Respite Program. 17 Saco residents attended our relatively new Sam L. Cohen Adult Day Center in Bitterford. They received 6,397 hours of person-centered care. It's a safe space for people, older adults with dementia, to spend their days, and it provides valuable respite for caregivers as well. And then, lastly, our probably most well-known program, Meals on Wheels, served 69 Saco clients, and we delivered 6,016 home-delivered meals. Sadly, right now, we have a waitlist for Meals on Wheels. In the two counties combined, it's over 250 people long. 10 Saco residents are currently on that waitlist. We leverage the time and expertise of over 600 volunteers at our agency to provide these services, and we appreciate and value your support. This year, we're requesting $5,500 to continue providing these services.
Thank you very much. One of the things I learned on my ride-along is that there is a 250-person or family waiting list on Meals on Wheels.
Yep.
And some number of those, and they didn't know at the time.
So, I checked before I came, 10 are Saco residents.
10 on the waiting list, so.
And that was as of two weeks ago, so the number fluctuates, but it's only going up. We haven't been able to take people off the list just due to, it's based on a target number of meals that our budget has the capacity to serve. And so, this, earlier this year, January, February, showed the highest referral rate to Meals on Wheels in the program's history. So, we were trying to keep up with the referrals, but at this, we couldn't essentially keep on the same pace of serving meals as we were on, and so, we had to institute it in mid, we started it in mid-January.
So, the additional $500, I guess it's 500, would help reduce that waiting list for Saco residents?
So, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to promise directly that it'll impact the waitlist because we're required, under the Older Americans Act, through which we receive some of the funding that we use to provide Meals on Wheels, that we, it's a first-come, first-served basis. So, we can't essentially take Saco residents off unless it is their time on the, on the waitlist. But any, any additional funding is contributing to that funding gap that we're experiencing right now, that we need to fill before we can start taking people off. So, it will impact certainly the time that people are waiting, the length of wait that they are experiencing.
So, thank you, Liz. Any questions to my right? Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Liz, thank you for your presentation and the work you do for the community, and not only our community, but all the communities. And this question may actually be for Ms. Ellis or Kevin. I'm looking at the budget book, and I'm seeing $5,500 is allocated for fiscal year 2019, but zero is spent as of February, February 2019. So, I'm just, is that somewhere else in the budget book as well?
No, this is an annual expenditure, and I believe the finance director just requisitions the check from accounts payable near the end of the fiscal year. I have a note as a reminder that I think is probably dated in May, and we just distribute the check to SMA.
We get the, we don't essentially invoice or anything for the money. It comes in one payment annually. And in total, we rely on municipal fundraising to contribute about $100,000 to our fundraising goals every year. So, it makes up a very important piece to our fundraising puzzle, year in and year out, so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Any additional questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Councilor Copeland.
It's, it's just, thank you for your work. I know it's a struggle, and, thank you. It's very troubling for me that 250 people are looking for Meals on Wheels and are not getting them. Why aren't you asking for more from us and for other, from other communities?
So, Meals on Wheels is a, is a very complicated balancing act. About 40% of the cost is covered by Older Americans Act funding. From year to year, the, the rate of referrals to the program changes. We try to, we're certainly out there soliciting more and more foundations, where we're applying for federal grants, which sometimes limit our ability to use their funds for the provision of meals. A lot of funders believe that it's covered under the, under the Older Americans Act, that Meals on Wheels is a program that's just, the full budget is covered, when that is not the case. So, we're, we're trying very hard. Every year, we ask for, we're required to ask for clients to cover some portion of the meal cost. That contribution per meal has gone down- That contribution per meal has gone down every year for the last 10 years. Right now, I think it's less than 60 cents per meal that they're contributing. So we're up against several challenges in terms of other sources of funding going down. And we essentially decided to start the waitlist because it was impacting the financial health of the, of other programs and the entire organization. So we kind of had to set a target meal count in the last couple of years. So it might have been that other programs were suffering and that we were just saying we were not going to institute a waitlist in the past where it was just a decision that the organization had to make the last couple of years. This is only the second time in the organization's history that we've ever had one.
Well, where will these people get their food?
So we, we have a private-pay, home-delivered meal program that we offer to them at a discounted rate of $5 a meal. And then we also work tirelessly to get them, it might be funds that can be freed up through other, access to other benefits. We do a full benefit screening to see if they might qualify for the emergency, the, it's the 30 pounds of shelf-stable food that...
That Jean was talking about.
That Jean was referring to. I can't remember the acronym right now. But there's a huge waiting list for that program as well, and strict eligibility requirements. So we're, we do our best to connect them to local grassroots efforts, food pantries. A lot of them, Meals on Wheels clients are, by definition, homebound. So sometimes that's a struggle to access food pantries, even if, or SNAP benefits, even if they do qualify. So it's a growing challenge.
Thank you for your good work.
Any additional questions? Councilor Johnston?
Yes, as others have said, you know, thank you for the presentation and the work you do. As the mayor had indicated, I don't know, about a month ago, I did go out with the Meals on Wheels program, and for me, it was rather eye-opening to actually see the amount of elderly people that were actually homebound and, you know, couldn't provide for themselves. So, I mean, I fully support what you do and look forward to funding it.
And the goal of all of our programs is to keep older adults living in the environment of their choice, which is most often in their own homes, for as long as possible. So Meals on Wheels and all of the combination of our programs is really important to accomplishing that. So thank you for your, for your consideration.
So any other questions to my left? Any others to my right? Thank you very much, Liz.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. And so next is the Southern Maine Finance Agency. Not, not quite, Paul. You're next after that. Southern Maine Finance Agency, thank you. Next up is Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission, Paul Schumacher.
Thank you very much. I don't have a PowerPoint. I have some handouts.
Oh, you have some handouts here? So...
Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name's Paul Schumacher. I am Director at Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission here in Saco. And I, we, Southern Maine Planning and Development, I'll just say SMPDC for now on, is the Council of Government, serving York and Southern Oxford County. The dues money that we receive from you folks and from other cities and towns, and we get some county money as well, we use to match our state and federal contracts from EDA, Maine DOT, what used to be the State Planning Office. And we also need those funds in order to sort of keep our operating costs at a reasonable level so we can provide services to folks like Saco and other cities and towns. I've just given you a list of some of the things we've done here over the last year, or in some cases, maybe a little longer. And I just, as I just sort of highlight those, and I'll try to run through them quickly, I just want to let you know that those are the things we have done, but they're also the types of things that we can do for you in the future, depending on what the city may need or request. So we, we have a revolving loan fund program, and we funded a couple loans through that program. And I just want to point out that the Southern Maine Finance Authority does our loan underwriting and administration. We decided to use them rather than sort of setting up our own infrastructure for the new loan programs that we had developed. So I, so Will's group does all of our loan underwriting, and it's sort of a win-win situation for both of us. We have worked with the staff recently in a couple successful CDBG applications. We're able, through our state funding, to provide some support to cities and towns in that regard. As far as brownfields goes, I get accused by my board of not being very good at promotion, so I'll take this opportunity. EPA, the Region One EPA, and actually federally, really considers our brownfields program to be sort of the premier one in New England, and actually sort of one of the premier brownfields programs in, in the country. And in Saco, over the last year, we did a Phase One Assessment Grant for the Public Works Site, and I think Chuck has been talking to Denise about additional assessment work on that site. And we have sort of earmarked that money and set it aside, depending on how the town, how the city may want to move on that project. A few years ago, we did provide a $200,000 grant for cleanup over on Market Street. I think it's town-owned. And I just, I'll point out that, you know, as you, I'm not sure what's happening with that site, but as you move forward with that, if there are any additional needs on that site, we'd certainly be willing to help and talk to you about that. As far as planning, administration, and regional sorts of ideas, we did help the town with their comprehensive plan a few years ago, which received state approval, which puts you in pretty elite company, actually. We are available to help your planning staff at all points. So you've had some transitions recently, and we're always available, right down the street, to help on the sort of legal issues associated with planning and zoning. You are, Saco is very much engaged with our cooperative purchasing program. You save $52,000, and I think it was 18, mainly through salt purchases. I think traditionally, Saco has always been the highest town as far as cost savings using that cooperative purchasing program. We did a project last year, which was to study a regional purchase of a dredge because of all the dredging needs, and I know that you guys are very familiar with that. It came up inconclusive, should I say? However, we still are talking with Maine DOT about maybe looking at sort of proceeding with some things on that. And we've actually had, believe it or not, a couple calls from New Hampshire and Massachusetts who are interested in, that would be a really novel thing to happen, to buy a dredge with Maine. We also do some work additionally with GP COG. We have public works directors meetings, which we run. We used to run them just for York County. Now we've combined them with the Cumberland County area. We have worked with Carroll and Eastern Trail on various types of, we want to help her, assist the Eastern Trail sort of move further south down towards Kennebunk, Wells, North Berwick, and South Berwick. And we have a coastal planner who is really pretty brilliant as far as coastal planning goes, and she's available, and she's been doing some economic impacts on coastal storms over the last few years about what they do, not just the big horrible storms that we get, but sort of the repetitive storms that may not be emergencies, trying to document how much damage gets done on a continual basis. On the backside, a number of transportation projects, I won't go through them all, but we, you know, we do work with Shuttle Bus quite a bit, our Transportation Director does. He manages, he manages, he managed the consultant route study. He's working on the pole system, as that is being developed. We're currently assisting the cities of Bitterford and Saco with putting an application into PACs for transit-oriented development application. He completed a route study for Shuttle Bus and our city route, and we've worked with Tri-City Age Friendly Group. And one of the other projects we're currently working on, which I didn't list, is a economic development project, which was sort of, came through DCD in the prior administration about issues related to workforce down here and them not being able to find people, and how do we get, is there any way to establish sort of transit connections into inland York County? So we're working with Shuttle Bus and York County Community Action on that. That's sort of a tough, tough project, but, you know, we are taking a look at that. So I just want to say thanks for the support you provided us. It's been 50 years of that support, and thanks for having me, and I'll answer any questions if I can.
Thank you very much, Paul. Any questions to my right? Seeing none. Any questions to my left? Seeing none.
Wow.
Paul, you just were so...
You guys must be getting tired.
...such an excellent job. Thank you very much. And next up, I believe, is the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association. And this is, it's a very important guy. Retired Sergeant Major or First Sergeant?
First Sergeant.
Retired First Sergeant Richard Langley?
Yes.
Who was the NCO charged when I had my first command, and everyone knows that a Second Lieutenant with a compass, I mean, is one of the most dangerous things in the entire Army. His job was to make sure that the compass stayed far away from me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Richard Langlis.
Have a handout.
I represent the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association. Hopefully, you have a pamphlet in front of you regarding the cemetery. Thank you for allowing me to speak about our work in the Veterans Cemetery. Our charge is to beautify the cemetery. We accomplished this by planting flowers, shrubs, erecting monuments, and honoring our veterans. Saco supported us with a donation last year. We thank you for that, and we ask you for support again this year. The cemetery opened in 2010. We currently have 1,263 burials. Of those, 79 are from Saco. In 2013, we began a fundraising drive to erect a monument honoring our veterans from the past. Present and future, we raised $20,000, and in 2015, we dedicated this monument. Another project that we accomplished is the World War I Monument last year. It was the 100th anniversary and the ending of World War I. We raised $12,000, and on November 11, 2018, we dedicated a monument honoring the veterans of that war. I encourage you to visit the cemetery this spring and summer and see the flowers in bloom that we planted. The physical location of the cemetery is 83 Stanley Road in Springville. In 2015, we began raising funds to erect a monument in memory of the PLW MIA veterans. Because of the cost of this monument, we reached out in the surrounding communities for help. We have a goal of $118,000, and we have $88,000 toward that goal. The State of Maine has been informed by the NCA, which is the National Cemetery Administration, that we will receive a grant of $3.8 million to expand the cemetery. That affected our plans, and because of the NCA, in the bit of the major project, but we still must bear the cost. We have planned to break ground this spring or summer, but now it looks like more like fall or even next year. We are still committed to see this project completion. On the plus side, the engineering cost, which has been completed with a paid from the $3.8 million grant. The Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery encompasses 95 acres. 39 acres are undeveloped due to roads, wetlands, buffers, along streams, ledges, and so forth. We are currently operating in a Phase One, which is approximately 20 acres. The series holds up to 1,559 casket burials, 922 cremated remains in the ground, and 864 cremated remains, which they call the niche wall. We have six niche walls, each one hauling 144 remains. When the expansion is completed, we'll create 460 lots for casket burials and 738 lots in the ground cremated burials. It is estimated that there is 61,000 veterans living in the Southern Maine within 50 miles of the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery. A veteran may apply for the reservation in the cemetery at any time. He or she may not reserve a specific site, as the sites are given on a continuous line. However, for casket burials, the next space is left vacant for the surviving spouse. The sketch I presented to you is the work. Briefly explain this sketch. Make a note of the area in the back for veterans who remain will never be recovered. Thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Oh, Councilor Copeland.
First, thank you for your service. I was very honored to attend the World War I Memorial Monument Installation, and it is a beautiful place. You are right, and thank you again.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Any other questions to my left? And thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for your service, particularly to me.
Thank you.
So, that's, next is TATV. TATV, oh, yeah, we got a letter from them. The Veterans Council. Veterans Council, no? And I think they're the, this is the group that plants flags at, for Memorial Day and Veterans Day, both? And then finally, York County, County Community Action. Last, but certainly not least, and if you would please introduce yourself, sir.
Yes, I'm Carter Friend, the Deputy Director with York County Community Action. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I have some handouts. Is that...
I'm sorry, you're Carter?
Last name was Friend?
Friend, yes, Carter Friend, all right.
Thank you very much. So, as I mentioned, I'm Carter Friend, and I'm the Deputy Director with York County Community Action, and we provide a range of services and resources to support the health, education, and economic opportunity of the residents of all of York County, including Saco. And we work with a range of clients, including many with complex needs. And so I thought that I would just touch on some of the services that we provide to give you a flavor of type of the, the types of needs that we address with our clients. What you should have in front of you, hopefully now, is a copy of our annual report, and it's something you can walk away with and take a look at to get a deeper understanding of our programs and services, which also lists our website, which is even a deeper explanation. And then also, a piece of paper which gives you what we give you every year, which is a listing of the services that we have provided to the residents of Saco and to the number of people that have received each one of those services. So just to give you a sense of what we do, largely, we provide two types of services. We help meet urgent needs that folks experience, but we also help folks move to self-sufficiency because we know that meeting an urgent need is not enough. So just to give you some examples of some of the urgent needs that we help folks with, if you look at the handout I gave you, under economic opportunity, you'll see something called Emergency Financial Assistance. And this is a program that helps folks that may be experiencing a bump not let that bump become something worse. So for example, we have clients that may be gainfully employed and have their car break down and don't have the $150 that's necessary to repair that car. Suddenly, their job is at risk, their wages are at risk, and even then, eventually possibly their housing's at risk. And we have, have several clients that experience that. So what this fund does is let us provide that $150 so that what is a small bump, a big bump to the person experiencing it, but a relatively small bump, doesn't get much worse. Another example of that would be somebody who is living and able to pay their rent, but they might experience a medical emergency and so are not able to pay their rent in a given month. Same type of situation with some funding from the Emergency Assistance Program, they're able to make that month's rent instead of letting a bad situation get much worse. Another example of urgent-type needs that we meet, you'll see on this list something called Default Home Ownership Assistance, which is just a fancy name for foreclosure prevention. Despite the fact that we actually are in the best economy that any of us have seen in our lifetime, foreclosure rates are actually high in York County and increasing. And so we work with folks that are experiencing foreclosure, and in many cases, are able to work with the bank and the individual to create a workout situation. So that's good for the community because you don't have an empty home. It's good for the bank because they get payments, and of course, it's very good for the clients because they are able to maintain their home. Final example of, again, of an urgent need that we meet is a program that you might be familiar with, which is our Energy Assistance Program. Low... be familiar with, which is our Energy Assistance Program, Low-Income Heating Assistance Program. And so folks during the winter that are struggling to heat their homes are able to call us, and if they qualify for the program, we provide funding to support energy assistance. So but as I said, it's not enough to simply meet folks' urgent needs. It's also really important to support them becoming economically self-sufficient, so that they're not as vulnerable to those types of crises. And so we work with folks over time through our community outreach workers, which are quasi-case managers, to work with individuals first to meet the urgent need, but then to ask them, how else might we work with you? How can we work with you to set goals to either advance in employment, advance through education to different employment, so that you become less vulnerable and move to self-sufficiency? And so it's that combination of meeting urgent needs and moving to self-sufficiency that are really able to meet the full range of our clients' needs. Couple other things I'd like to mention. One thing you'll see on here that we provide Head Start Services. We've had a very strong partnership with the city, providing Head Start and early Head Start Services, and I just want to thank you for that. You'll also see on here that we provide medical services through Nassau Healthcare. We are one of only a few organizations in the country that is both a community action agency, providing social services, and a community health center, providing medical services. And many of the clients we work with have complex needs. They don't wake up in the morning and think, this is a medical need, this is a social service need. They just need help. A child with pneumonia in the winter needs medical care and a warm home and food on their plate. So we're able to integrate our services, wrap them around clients to meet their unique set of needs, many of which are health needs and social service needs. Then finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is, we provide many direct services, but we also work in communities to help make those communities stronger. And I think you heard earlier tonight from Jim and Reverend Shirley about the work that Bedford-Saco Chamber is doing around workforce development, and we are part of that partnership. And we've heard from employers there that one of the services we can help provide is, they have trouble recruiting folks, but they also have trouble retaining folks, workers. And so part of what we can do is provide supports for those workers, so that when they do experience some sort of bump, it doesn't derail them, so that the employer also loses a good employee. So that's a quick overview. Very happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your support in the past and for considering supporting us again this year.
Thank you very much, Carter. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Councilor Copeland.
Thank you for the good work you do. I was talking with your colleague at the Our Community Center yesterday. We had Earth Day gathering and workshops and so forth, or tables. My question is, how do folks access or find out, or if people are in need, you know, people don't walk around saying, York County Community Action, you know, can you help me? Where, what, how do they start the process to get help from you?
Yeah, so I mean, there are many different ways people can access our services. They can either access by phone or in person, or we can come to their home. So just in terms of actually physically contacting us. But in terms of actually reaching out to folks so that they can know that we exist in order to contact us, actually, one of the biggest referral sources are people themselves, to neighbors and friends. So we rely on that, and we actually ask our clients and patients to make referrals to their friends. We have a website that people visit. We actually now are pushing out on social media. That's something that is very quickly beyond my knowledge, but in fact, is an increasingly important way of accessing folks. And then we do it the old-fashioned way. We do show up at events like the one that you attended, and we have outreach workers that will go to housing facilities, et cetera, just so that we are literally visible for folks.
We have a great resource here within our city. Will Rankin, he's our General Assistance Person, is, are you and him in communication and helping one another?
We are. So the community outreach workers that I mentioned, these quasi-case managers, are located in different communities. The one in this area is located in Bedford, and they work very closely with all of the GA administrators throughout the county.
Well, thank you. I'm a therapeutic foster parent myself, so I understand that people need help, and I want to applaud your efforts to move people to self-sustainability. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Yes, Councilor Johnston.
Thank you for the presentation. What I'd actually like to point out is to council, several years ago, when this organization first came to me and asked to fund them, they were providing a couple hundred thousand dollars less in services. So the need, obviously, is still there. You know, with this projection, they almost served a million dollars' worth of services for $4,000, you know, the city of Saco's contribution. So I just hope everybody will continue to support them. Thank you.
Yes, Carter, any additional questions to my left? To my right, seeing none? I do have a question associated with Head Start. You know, the Saco School System?
Yes.
Is trying to start up a pre-K.
Yes.
Will that in any way affect the, your Head Start numbers?
So we actually work very closely with the public pre-Ks. There are many communities we're in that already have public pre-Ks. And in fact, public pre-Ks are mandated to approach us as Head Start providers to make sure we coordinate.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. And so we, our experience has been that we coordinate very closely, and that we're serving a particular type of child and family that supplements and coordinates with the pre-Ks.
So excellent. Thank you for that. I think that is it.
Thank you.
Before I adjourn though, we have a question, and since First Sergeant Langley is right here. We're not showing in the budget book the allocation for the Southern Maine Veterans, excuse me, Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association.
Yes, so in, if you had a chance to read the memo that I sent out, there was a little bit of confusion related to this particular organization in last year's budget. Again, having to do with just being new, we initially told the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Association they had been funded, because I thought that was what was coming out of the Veterans Council line. And so rather than walking back that commitment, we funded them out of contingency for fiscal year 2019, and then we wanted to put forward a more formal request as part of this budget cycle. That budget request was entered into the mil rate calculator, and it was part of the memo that I put out for this evening's meeting.
So what is the amount of the request? Where did we find the initial?
The amount of the request was $1,000. Unfortunately, this was an item that just got missed in building the recommended budget book, so it got added to the mil rate calculator for tonight's meeting. So it's in the mil rate calculator.
So it is in the mil rate calculator, and it's $1,000. Okay.
So it'll be available for the council to review and vote on at our budget meeting in two weeks.
All right. Thank you very much. Without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned. And we will resume, and I will call to order the meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting at 8:35. So thank you all. I stopped looking at my email before 5:00, so I missed it completely. Hey, Bill. Do you think we'd need to bring this to a workshop?
Yes.
So, this is just approving a workshop? Traffic simulator section improvements?
No, it's a business partnership initiative.
Oh, okay. Good. Oh, I wish you were here. I've got to fight that to the end. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. As I move this out of the way and go to the agenda. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to recognize that the, that six members of the council are present. Councilor Archer is excused, absent. He just was notified shortly before the meeting that he had some pressing matter he had to deal with. I'd like to ask the audience if they would please join the city council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize that the city administrator, Mr. Sutherland, is present. The city clerk, Ms. Hughes, is present. I also recognize the following staff as being here. Ms. Salis, the Finance Director. Mr. Toomey from Code Enforcement is here. The Deputy Director, I guess, of Code Enforcement. The Fire Department has Chief DeRoz, Deputy Chief Martin, Deputy Chief Pendleton are here. Planning and Economic Development, Ms. Clavett is here. She is the Department Director. And Ms. Prescott is here. She is the Planner. And Parks and Recreation, I see that Mr. Summers is here. Public Works, I see that Mr. Fox is here. In Facilities, I see Mr. Roth is here. Oh, I see the Director of Code Enforcement is here, Mr. Lambert. Deputy Chief Clement's here. Ms. Roy is here. Ms. Cadlec is here for HR. And, say again?
Mr. Rankin.
Mr. Rankin, excuse me. And Mr. Rankin is here from Clerk's Office and also associated with General Assistance. And we have somebody in the booth from IT. Who's that? Oh, and that's, and Mr. Lambert from IT is here. So thank you for the hand signals. The, the next item in general, I want to refer to the fact that we have received a fee schedule distributed by email, and that will be being discussed at our next meeting on May 6. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the Sebago Speaks presentation that's going to occur this coming Wednesday, May 1, from 6:00 to 8:30, at the Saco Middle School Library. And that is a seventh-grade team is working hard and deserve an amazing audience. They have been working on writing inspirational talks about a topic related to how to change their community or the world. So I think we should all be paying attention to that. And that has a $5 fee associated with it, presumably to help support the school department. Next up is Public Comment. And first is Audrey Burgos. Audrey, she left. I know that First Sergeant Langley has left. So, former Mayor Pylon.
Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. At the last council meeting, I said to the mayor and the council that I had noticed some froth, some white froth, moving down the Saco River, and some, what appeared to be some styrofoam material moving down the river. And I had asked the mayor and the city administrator And I had asked the mayor and the city administrator if they could look into that. And you had nodded in the vertical motion that you would.
In fact, I asked if we could get the, perhaps the fire department to help Parks and Recreation on Saturday associated with that. And we had quite a deluge on Friday that made those waters dangerous to be on.
So, the answer is, we have not identified this material?
As of yet.
As of yet, but we are working on it?
I believe so. Um, Fire Chief De Ross, Chief De Ross, uh, is there any way that we could put a boat on the river south of the Lower Falls? Or I should say east of the Lower Falls, to identify the materials that are, um, polluting the, the waterway currently?
Operation Five is not yet ready to be on water, we're aiming alongside of the hull right now.
Okay.
We anticipate a view ready for the water bill next week.
All right, thank you. So, as soon as that squared away, if it's quite possible to put the boat in the water to identify these materials and see what we can do for collecting them?
I'll do it as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
It appears, excuse me, do you want to talk, Kevin?
I just wanted to say that I did have a conversation with my staff last week about it. Our assumption, a lot of this is foam, not styrofoam, it's actual froth that's churned up from the water.
Yeah, there is, there is this white substance that's moving down the river. There is actually styrofoam. I went over to Marston's Marina, and I was able to, uh, get some of this styrofoam that's floating in the river. So, there's two, two products that's moving down the river.
Okay, well, we'll look into it when the boat's ready to go back in the water.
Okay.
Sir.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, next, I see Reverend Shirley Bowen is, is not here. So, uh, next, please forgive my pronunciation, Chang Sheng Xiao. Please step forward, state your name and address. And let us know... Okay, uh, just state your name and address for the record. And, um, and then address us with your concern.
Uh, name for the business is Oriental Wellness Center. And the name is Chang Sheng Xiao, is that correct?
Okay.
And the address is 977 Forest Avenue, Hopland. But this one is for the company business address, but the service location is a different one.
Okay. So, we got the address?
One second, please. Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, what would you like to say?
Actually, I don't know what this is getting to.
Did you sign up just so, just to come to the meeting, or this is to speak to the council?
If you wanted to address the council on a specific matter, this is that time. Uh, I believe that we have you down. Um, are, are you the Oriental Wellness Center?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay, so we have you down as the next order of business. But it's largely just pro forma, there'll be a motion and a second. Uh, we'll have some comment, and then there'll be a vote, and, and you'll end up with your approval by the council.
Okay, great, because we just be here getting informed, but actually, we don't know what to do, sorry about that.
No, 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 it's, it's a learning process.
Okay, sure.
And so, here you are. So, so I guess, and that would be, so if you have nothing else to say, you can pay atten, have a seat. And we'll go on to that next item of business.
Okay.
And, um, and then we'll go on to the one after that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, the next item of business is the consent agenda, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion made by Councilor Minton, second by Councilor Smart, to accept the consent agenda. Does any council wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? To my right? None. To my left, Councilor Copeland?
Yes, I would like to, uh, move...
Okay. Wish to remove F and H from the consent agenda.
Your microphone?
F and H, and I want to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, okay, just one second here, I'm pull F, and then I'm gonna pull H. So, are there any other items to be pulled, Councilor Johnston?
It's not a request to remove, I just would like to make a quick comment on, uh, item D, which is just to publicly thank Carol and Skip Raiden for their donation, uh, several years ago, on top of their other donation of eight years ago, for the creation of the dog park. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and for that recognition. So, um, the consent agenda minus items F and H are now open, uh, on the table. Any comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor, uh, excuse me, Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The consent agenda is now approved 6-0. Uh, so, first up is, is item F. Councilor Johnston, do you have a motion? Oh, do you want, here, I've got... Is it putting the coffee on there? Oh, you have both. Of course.
Lynn just wanted to make sure I can still read. Ah, again, forgive me if I butcher your name. Uh, Wyng Han, who is located at the Oriental Wellness Center LLC, doing business as the Saco Massage, 150 Main Street, has applied for a massage therapist license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and has provided a copy of his state of main massage therapist license in compliance with Chapter 138, subsection, uh, 138-9, basic proficiency. Be it ordered at the city council, grant Wyng Han a massage therapist license in accordance with the codes of the City of Saco, Chapter 138. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Uh, motion is made by Councilor Johnston, seconded by Councilor Minton. Any comments to my right? Any to my left? Councilor Copeland?
Um, I was just noticing on their application that they're, um, they're not local at all. So, if they are, their home and their mailing address is in Flushing, New York, how can their bus, business address be here?
Is there a second page to that, that I, has the local...
Right here.
Information? No, but I mean, isn't there another page after this that, um, nope, okay.
52 Glenwood?
Um, he's talking about H right now.
Yeah.
No, we're, we're on, we're doing...
They're all tied together.
F now.
Well, he read H.
Oh, he read H?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, uh, okay. So, we're at H, uh, Ms. Hughes? We're apparently at H.
Um, so, what they're doing is they're taking over the Saco Massage, so it's actually 150 Main Street is the address of the establishment.
But they show that their mailing and home address are in New York.
Correct.
How can they do massages and commute?
I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't believe you need to be a resident still in a business in the city.
You don't have to be a resident, no. So, do you, but would you address, are you going to be living locally?
Yeah, sure. Okay, can I explain this question just in a simple way? I know maybe you cannot understand why we like be the, like, permanent address there, but work here. But actually, everyone want to live in New York Flushing, but, because it's much more convenient for us. But however, we have to like make a living, make money, right? So, uh, they will be here to work, like, maybe five days or four days per week, and then go back, and for like two days rest, and then come back to work. So, so usually, we will put all the address in New York. It's also easier for us and for our families.
Yeah.
That's it.
Would you be living within Saco during those four...
Definitely during weekdays.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, sure, definitely. We cannot like traveling six hours, go back to New York and come back, that might be right.
So, Councilor Copeland?
Thank you.
Is that sufficient?
Thank you.
Okay. So, any other questions to my left? Any to my right? Thank you very much. Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
And Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0. Councilor Johnston, do you have another motion?
This one's supposed to be H?
This one is F.
F. Yeah. Again, I'm probably gonna butcher this name. Chang Shang Zhao?
Sounds right.
Owner of Oriental Wellness Center LLC, doing business as Saco Massage, 150 Main Street, has applied for a massage establishment license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and has also completed the City of Saco application for business registration. Be it ordered at the city council, grant Chang Shang Zhao, owner of Oriental Wellness LLC, doing business as Saco Massage, a business, or a massage establishment license in accordance to the codes of the City of Saco, Chapter 138. Move to approve the order.
Second.
So, I have a motion made by Councilor Johnston, seconded by Councilor Minton. Any comments to my left? Uh, any comments to my right? Seeing none. Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0.
Welcome to town.
So, thank you, welcome to, to the City of Saco. So, uh, next up is a public hearing. Yep, here I am. Councilor Gay, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Each year, main municipal association presents municipalities with new appendices for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. This year, overall maximums on Appendix A have increased slightly. The food maximums on Appendix B have increased slightly since last year. On Appendix C regarding housing, we used an average between New York County HMFA and York Kidery South Borough HMFA. Those amounts are up slightly in all categories this year. Amounts in Appendix D for utilities have remained the same as last year. Suggested motion, I move to open the public hearing on the amendment to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance, Appendix A, overall maximum, Appendix B, food maximums, Appendix C, GA Housing Maxims, and Appendix D Utilities.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Gay, seconded by Councilor Doyle. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Uh, Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
And Councilor Gay?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next is item B, Councilor Johnston?
To start the fiscal year 2020 budget process, the finance director and city administrator presented a budget forecast and workshop on February 4th...
Mr. Mayor? Point of order?
Yes, sir.
That, that was to open the public hearing, and then have a public hearing, and then we have to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much for pointing that out. I was hoping that I could stream through this meeting quickly.
No, such a lot.
So, we've had a vote, the public hearing is now open, does anyone wish to comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading for May 6th, 2019.
Second.
So, Councilor, Councilor Gay has made a motion, Councilor Doyle is second of the motion to close the public hearing. Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 6-0. Next, is another public hearing. Councilor Johnston?
To start the fiscal year 2020 budget process, the finance director and city administrator presented a budget forecast and workshop on February 4th, 2019, which established a directive for staff. On March 25th, 2019, the city administrator presented a recommended FY 20 budget, 2020 budget, which fully covered school department expenditures. The school board voted on their budget on March 13th, and was subsequently moved forward to the council for consideration. The council met with the departments and agencies to review and discuss budgets and workshops on April 1, April 8, April 16, April 22, and tonight, April 29. I move to open the public hearing on fiscal year 2020 city budget in the Water Resource Recovery Department.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Johnston, seconded by Councilor Minton, to open a public hearing. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none, Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
And Councilor Gay?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0. The public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget is now open. Does anyone wish to step forward and address the council?
Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. Mr. Mayor, council members, um, I had a couple of questions for the city administrator on a couple... Couple sections of the budget. Can I ask the city administrator?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Kevin, on page 19 of the revenue detail chart. Are you there? See there?
Yes.
Okay. At the bottom, we're, at the bottom, Kevin, um, it said... Intergovernmental, uh, revenues, the third one from the bottom, revenue sharing and state revenue sharing. It appears that you booked, I think it's $284,467,000, is that right?
That is half a percent more than what, um, the 2% is, so that's two and a half percent. That's the assumption about what the state's going to, uh, provide this year.
Okay. I think that, um, why did you book two and a half percent if they're actually going to provide us with approximately 5%?
Until there is a approval from the state, I'm reluctant to, to actually put 5% in. And that would be part of our conversation for next week and the week after.
Okay. And then in, um, the, let's see, um, the homestead exemption, which is just below that, we have, uh, approximately $203,000 bump increase over the previous year. Increase over the previous year. Is that, that number correct because of the increase in, um, building permits that we experienced?
I don't have an answer for you, Don, at this time. I'll have to add that to my budget questions and supply a response for next week. But I would assume that it has to do with growth of new housing in the community.
Okay, I just want to know if that was, was that number generated by the amount of building permits that were issued? That's all. Just want to get an idea of where that number was, where that number came from. Okay? Okay. In your, your department, in your department, there was a RAD, I believe, to a 1.1% RAD increase, a recommendation.
Yep.
You've made some changes in your staff?
The 1.1 is for the whole organization. That's for all employees within, all non-union employees in the City of Saco.
Okay. So in your office, your office, you actually have three people working in your office right now, right?
And that would include those three people.
Okay. So I guess my concern is your predecessor ran the city with one administrative assistant and himself. You now have three people in the administrative, administrative, administrative office and yourself. Why is that?
I have a council that's giving, given me the resources to hire additional staff because of the demands of this community. You've got a growing community and you need people to do the work.
If I may.
This is not supposed to be a Q and A with me.
No, no, I know, but I'm just.
Let me just point out that one of the people is a communications person. And so that's a, that's a new role. When I was on the council, I spoke with that very city administrator and said, we need to be paying closer attention to communicating what city government is doing. And the council with the new city administrator recognized that that's one of those useful things. So that's one of the new people. And I'm not sure there's.
Doesn't matter.
Who the other new people are. But there's, but it is, it's a change in perspective to be more 21st century, as you might say.
When the fire department was, when the chief was presenting his budget to the council last week, the week before, his request was to put two, two additional firefighters on, so he was looking for a 10-person crew. He's got eight, he runs with eight right now. It's an eight-man, it's an eight-man shift right now. Yes, right?
It's an eight-person shift with additional two.
He wants an additional two, right?
Has an additional two.
Has an additional two from last year.
Budget I'm offering would give, put two more in. He's looking for six more.
Right. Okay. So each shift would have how many more?
A total of 10.
10?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay. So I think my concern, well, I don't think, my concern is the, he's up to eight, what, how many runs a year?
Three, over 3,000.
Over 3,000. If you dissect the number of calls, how many of those calls are actually medical and how many calls are actually fire calls? Dissect them. A lot of them are medical calls.
Yes.
Right? Okay. So we're not really a fire company as much anymore. We're a medical service organization. And so do we need more firefighters or do we need more medical people? I spoke to the mayor in Westbrook, and they run an eight-man crew out of their three or four firehouses. Here's the hooker. In Scarborough, they have six fire stations and they have no firefighters that are town employees. They're all per diems, all per diems. So what that means is those firefighters work in Saco. They work full-time in Saco, Bitterford, South Portland, Portland, Old Orchard Beach. And those firefighters work for the town of Scarborough on per diem. Those people have been working for Scarborough for 10 and 20 years. They fill, when they're not working here, they go up there and they have their shift that they, they work. They're not town employees. So therefore, there are no benefits. They're not paying these guys benefits or gals benefits. They're not paying him other, other benefits that they would get if you were a town employee, no pension. They're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing it this way. I had a meeting with Tom Hall. We talked about this. It might be a way to circumvent hiring more people when we don't necessarily need more people. Not every shift has calls, runs that are busy. If you talk, if you look at the data, you'll see that certain days and certain hours are busier than maybe Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Maybe they're busier on the weekends. Maybe that's when you need your per diem guys or gals. I think before we jump into this and commit to more firefighters, we need to look at the data. And before we hire them and commit future councils to this additional cost, we have to look at the data and look at how we can save the town and the taxpayers more money or less money in this case. And look at the per diem system, because that's how Scarborough's running their fire department. So look at the data, look at and talk to the chief about when their busier periods are and plug the holes with per diem firefighters. These aren't people that, these are professional firefighters that are picking up shifts in Scarborough. And these are Saco firefighters and Old Orchard Beach firefighters and Portland firefighters. Get the information before you make this decision and commit us and commit taxpayers. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Counselor, is there another? Oh, Mrs. Pylon, please.
My name is Lindsay Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle West, and I'm here to speak in support of the Dyer Library and the Saco Museum. And each year at budget time, we ask the City of Saco to support the operating expenses of the library and museum. In reality, it's actually the taxpayers that you're supporting, not, not in essence, the, the library. Because you're supporting the taxpayers who receive the benefits of the services of the library and museum. And I just very quickly want to run through some of the ones that you may not have thought about. The library offers the only free computer access in town. We offer, the library offers free meeting room space for nonprofit organizations, community groups, things like that. The annual combined door count of 169,976 makes the library and the museum one of the busiest places in town. We offer free art exhibition space to local artists and students. We offer, it's the resource in town for free literacy programs for young children, up 15% from last year. At the museum, 4,134 students visited this year. Both building, between both buildings, we serve more children than any other library in the state. And I'll save a few of these for, for the next meeting, but this last one, I think, is really important. According to the main state library calculator that assigns a monetary value to services that libraries provide, the Dyer Library offers on a yearly economic value of $3,052,500 to library users. Now, that's an annual figure of, of the value of what we're providing to Saco citizens. And as a Saco taxpayer and as one who believes and personally supports the mission and the work of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum, I thank the council for helping to make these important resources available to our, to our community and our taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council on the fiscal year 2020 budget? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the FY20 municipal budget in the waste, or the Water Resource Recovery Department for May 13, 2019.
Second.
Do I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Minton? Any comments to my right? Any to my left? Counselor Minton?
I just want to make sure that we did notice this in the newspaper correctly and all that good stuff, so we don't have that coming back. I noticed it is noted in this that it was published on April 15.
Yes. Thank you very much for pointing that out.
Thank you.
It was published by our very dutiful city clerk. So Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing passes six zero. Next, Counselor Gay, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Capitol Plan Committee met on March 13, developed and recommend a capital program that would be included as part of the city administrator's recommended budget. On March 25, 2019, the city administrator presented and recommended fiscal year 2020 budget, which included a Section 3 of the overall budget, the five-year capital program. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2024 capital program.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Gay, seconded by Counselor Doyle to open the public hearing on the capital program. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Gay?
Yes.
A motion to open the public hearing passes six zero. Does anybody wish to step forward to discuss the adoption of the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2024 capital program? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston, I'm sorry, Counselor Gay, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move to close the public hearing and let it be ordered that the city council set the vote on fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 2024 capital program for May 13, 2019.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Gay, seconded by Counselor Doyle to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 24 capital program. Any comments to my right? My left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer? I'm sorry. Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
And Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes six zero. Next item up is item D.
I'll take that.
Counselor Smart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works is requesting that a portion of the capital funds currently allocated for a shared wash bay facility be utilized to construct a suitable wash bay connected to the end of the new facility for a larger equipment in the city fleet. The 325,000 currently earmarked originally approved as part of the fiscal year 17 budget in the capital plan was for a shared wash bay facility. Utilizing 215,000 of this for the PW, for the Public Works facility project would be more beneficial and cost-effective use than previous options. With a slight change in the intent of the resource shifting from a shared approach to strictly part of the Public Works facility and the funding set to return to the unassigned fund balance at the close of the fiscal year, staff is asking council to reestablish its interest in using these funds to preserve the city's fleet. The motion would have no impact on the tax rate as it is a use of assigned fund balance. Be it ordered that the city council extend the use of the capital funds for the wash bay infrastructure as part of the new Public Works facility, and any remaining funds may be used to negotiate the washing of its smaller or less complex fleet equipment with other providers. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor Minton to fund a Public Works wash bay. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
So the, the 215K meets the original intent that was two councils ago. It's my opinion that we should take the leftover 110,000 and allow it to expire at year end, returning to the unassigned fund balance where we could better appropriate it versus just leaving it in limbo until we, I mean, right now, the idea as written anyway is that these funds would potentially be used for negotiating something with, with ADW pile for washing the school buses. But that's not in the works right now. We haven't been presented with anything to me allowing it to expire, again, better appropriating it perhaps in this year's budget or FY20's budget as budgeted use of those reserves. And if, you know, if the need is still there in the future, we can always reappropriate funds. I just, I'm not really comfortable with just having funds hang around in the capital program that aren't being used.
So are you planning on making an amendment to the motion?
I will, but I'm.
Do you want to, do you want to listen to?
We can, I'll make the amendment and then.
Yep, please.
So my amendment would be be it ordered that the city council extend the use of the 250,000 or 215,000 of the capital funds for the wash bay infrastructure as part of the new Public Works facility, and the remaining funds be returned to the unassigned fund balance at the close of the fiscal year.
Second.
So I have a motion, an amendment to the main motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Doyle, and that amendment is to return unexpended funds for the wash bay to the general fund at the close of the fiscal, of this fiscal year. Do you, let me ask Mr. Sutherland first, is, is there anything that would hamper doing that?
No, it just means we'll bring, if we do negotiate something with ADW pile, we'll bring it to council for movement of resources in fiscal year 20.
I think that's great. Thank you. So any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Copeland?
I was wondering if we could hear the director of Public Works, if he has any issues?
Yep. So Mr. Fox, do you have any issue with this amendment, which is to take unexpended funds from building a Public Works wash bay and return them at the end of the fiscal year to the general fund?
Yeah. Fully understand where you're going with the amendment and also I think there's support for the 215 going to the Public Works facility, which doesn't put us reliant on a private facility somewhere, which I think is a great investment for the city. The only thing I was going to propose, because the funds would go back anyway, is just that we would still have May and June of this year to potentially put forth, once we know that we have a suitable alternative for the fleet to wash it at the new Public Works facility, we could put a sort of final proposal together for ADW pile to see if we could lock down an agreement for the bus fleet, which could utilize a fully automated one. But if you're looking to actually sort of roll that 100,000 into some of your 2020 budget considerations, I can understand that. However, if you're willing to just let it take its natural course for the next two months, I would try to work with economic development and sort of expediate our discussions with ADW pile and put forth a proposed agreement with them and see if they would be on board. And if we couldn't nail it down in the next two months, then it would go back to the general fund anyway. So either way, I'm sure we can work.
So Counselor Johnston, does that meet your criteria? Appears that it may.
Well, yes and no. I mean, my intent here is ultimately to submit a amendment or a RAD, I guess, during the budget process to take that 110 and then add it to next year's capital program and have you spend it how you see fit. But that way, we're not, this month, this money's already hit the mill rate once. Instead of just hanging around hoping for something to come to fruition, we could spend it. it in next years and hopefully either reduce or my intent really is to increase the capital spending with this.
And that would be to essentially add a purpose?
Yes.
Into the next capital, into the 2020?
The number's right in front of me right now, but I know that we've reduced the capital spending line, and so I'm hoping to put this back into it.
And that's understandable to you.
Absolutely, yeah. And we could just still continue to work on a potential agreement with ADEW pile and look at a budget amendment potentially or something, or, or propose the use of capital funds from another source or something potentially if that comes to fruition, but it won't be tied quite as tightly to that July 1st date as it is right now.
So before I go to other comments, I'd like to ask Councillor Doyle as the second, do you want to speak to your second? No? Okay. Any comments on the amendment to my left? Any comments to the amendment to my right? Seeing none, Councillor Gay?
Yes.
And Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
And Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
The amendment passes six zero. The motion on the floor is the main motion as amended. Are there any additional comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Seeing none, Councillor Gay?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes as amended, six zero. Next up is the, oh, the year-to-date budget update. Ms. Salas, you're on.
Okay, so I'll just try and run through these pretty quickly, given the lateness of the hour. So, I know March is a little bit delayed, but we are looking at a general fund budget update that goes through March. We worked four rounds on the payroll journal with paychecks and were finally able to get something that hits all of our accounts correctly and ties out to the withdrawals that happen every payroll. So that was a great process and paychecks was really good throughout the whole process and making any changes that needed to be made. With the balance of taxes paid by most taxpayers on March 8th, the undesignated fund balance is currently at a strong 16.5 million or 29.58% of adopted budget. Of course, as we go through the next couple of months, expenses are going to come in. We won't see a significant infusion of cash like what we got at the second half of taxes again, so this number's going to come down. But if you look at the fund balance projections in your budget books, you can see that we're still going to have a very strong fund balance at the end of the year, certainly sufficient to cover the current one-time expenses that are in the recommended budget, plus a little bit more. Assessing, the assessing department is at just 62.5% of budget spent versus 75% of the year elapsed. Of course, assessing was understaffed until February. Additional contracted help has been hired to get all the valuations into the system before tax commitment, and overall, this department is not going to go over budget, for sure. Building maintenance, so building maintenance, and there's a couple other items in this budget for March that you'll see this. We did a bunch of budget amendments that were approved by council, specifically line item adjustments related to the union increases and other salary lines, as well as a readjustment and reallocation of use of TIF funds. Those budget amendments were entered into munis and effective March 31st, but some expenses had to be transferred in order to correspond to the budget amendment, and those transfers didn't occur until April. So this budget update's a little bit out of whack, just in terms of some of these departments. So building maintenance is an example of that. It's currently over budget by 16,184 through the end of March. Since December, all of the building maintenance staff have been paid out of Public Works. The budget amendment number 11, which implemented union increases and adjusted other salary lines, was passed by council on 4/1, and it corrected this by moving all of the base pay lines into Public Works. However, there was still $21,000 in salaries that had been paid out of the building maintenance budget that also needed to be reallocated to Public Works as well. The transfer was dated April 3rd and will be reflected in the next budget update. When you take this adjustment into consideration, building maintenance is under budget by $5,000. City Clerk is at 79.2% of budget, a little bit ahead. The city clerk's budget tracked ahead basically all year because most expenditures for the city clerk are related to Election Day. Additionally, much of the funds expended by general assistants occurred during the winter months, of course, citizens in need looking for aid with things like heating fuel and advertising costs related to all the code and charter changes have also pushed the advertising line a little bit high. Contingency, this is another just budget amendment versus expense allocation timing issue. The budget amendment reallocated the full cost of the Claire parcels into the Economic Development Fund. The budget adjustment occurred in March, but the transfer of the actual expenditures related to the Claire parcels occurred in April. When the, when this adjustment is taken into consideration, contingency is under budget by $108,000. Council is at 84.1% of budget, tracking a little ahead. Council is tracking ahead even before the fourth quarter stipends are paid. Once those stipends are paid, the council budget will be over by $308,000. So I would recommend that any future expenses related to council, whether it be training or some of the awards things that we've been doing, be paid by the city administrator out of the contingency budget, which has plenty of funding available. County taxes at 99.2% of budget spent. This bill's been paid in full, no further expenditures will affect the line. Insurance is at 88.5% of budget spent. With the realignment of insurance renewals to the fiscal year, the finance director, myself, liquidated the prepaid insurance line that has sat on our balance sheet in this expense account for a number of years. The non-spendable prepaid portion of the fund balance, which corresponded to the prepaid insurance asset account, will likewise be liquidated to the unassigned fund balance at year's end, which should increase the unassigned fund balance by 164,000. So that's part of why we know that we're looking at a pretty healthy unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Parks and Recreation is at 79.5% of budget spent. Contracted services came in a little over budget because Parks and Recreation continued to make use of contracted custodial services prior to the hiring of the new custodian position. This was somewhat offset by lower than budgeted pay in Public Works for that position, but if the city council would like to see those numbers tied out better, we can reallocate the related contract expenses into Public Works for this fiscal year. Tree work came in over budget by $5,000, I should say 5,000, not 500 as well. We could reallocate that to contingency to get this department more in line. Planning and Economic Development is at just 53.9% of the budget spent. This department, of course, has been understaffed for much of the year, and we suffered a loss in our city planner halfway through the year. The Director of this department also inherited a contracted services line that was budgeted too high. Savings on the economic development side will be offset by a lower-than-budgeted transfer from the Economic Development Fund. So savings on the economic development side of planning economic development for this fiscal year don't fall to the unassigned fund balance, they fall to the fund balance of the Economic Development Fund. Public Works, 65.5% of budget spent, and I think Director Fox has done a lot of good work explaining this, just the enormous level of FEMA work trying to, trying to get that extra revenue, and we are talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it's a good investment of the team's time, but that's taken away from some of the other projects that were on the books for this year. Additionally, they've been working to spend down the bond projects and especially the Public Works facility. This winter was also a little bit lighter, so Socopathfinders was talking about that. We didn't have a ton of snow, there was a lot of rain, so the costs have been a little bit lighter than the average of the last five years. The team is gearing up for construction season in May and June, so this budget will be closer to target by the end of the year. The Solicitor is over budget by 35,780, another timing issue. The budget amendment to reallocate TIF-related solicitor expenses was executed in March, but the transfer of actual related expenditures did not occur until April. When this adjustment is taken into consideration, however, the Solicitor is still over budget by $9,400. There's just been a lot of pressure on this line for a number of different reasons. Future expenses, future expenses for the rest of the year should be paid out of contingency. Supported entities, 86.6% of budget spent. Most of our supported entities have been paid for this year. Supported entities that have not requested or made use of their allocated funding include the Coastal Waters Commission, the Conservation Commission, SMFA, SMAA, Socopathfinders, and the Veterans Council. Specifically on the Socopathfinders, we have not received yet our rebate from the state, which is supposed to fund the Socopathfinders Association. I have an email out to Inland Fisheries, a contact there to try and figure out what's going on with the payment, and I may reach out to the Socopathfinders and see if they have a better contact for me at the state, because we want to make sure that we get that money and that we pay the Socopathfinders for their work. Transfer expenses at 3.1% of budget spent. The TIF transfers did occur in April, and they'll be reflected in our next budget update. Okay, so switching over to the revenue line. Building rentals is tracking pretty far behind. We're at 54.3% of budgeted revenues. We are owed $36,726 from some of our lessees. We're working through an improved process. We really need to make sure that all of our rental income is going through billing so that we have better tracking in the future. We're sending out some letters to make sure that we can get all of these balances paid upon the renewal or execution of the lease agreements, if not before. Cable television franchises at 55.2% of budgeted revenues. We are still waiting on the Q3 check. City Clerk revenues are at 68.3%. This item was budgeted too high in fiscal year 2019 and has been corrected for fiscal year 2020. So if you were to peruse the revenue detail lines, you might see some decreases on the city clerk-related fees, and that's just because we had budgeted too high versus what we were actually getting the last couple of years. Code enforcement, a bright spot, 106% of budgeted revenues. Code enforcement exceeded the revenue targets in March with three months left to go. Strong economy has driven more in fee revenue than anticipated, and hopefully, numbers like that will garner council support for making Irish Griffith our second code enforcement officer a full-time employee of Soco only, as Old Orchard Beach has elected not to continue to fund half of that position. Interest is 179,000 above target. The city of Soco is definitely benefiting from rate increases at the federal level, and we've maintained a very strong balance, because again, a lot of the bond revenue hasn't been spent down just yet. We are looking at how we can sustain that kind of revenue level in the next fiscal year. Finance fees are at 68.6% of budget revenues. Lean fees came in much lighter than anticipated at 53.8% of budgeted revenues, although lean and tax interest is very close to target. Like I mentioned before, we are missing a payment on snowmobile registrations from the state, and we're looking into what's going on there. Planning and Economic Development, 94.3% of budget revenues. Fees are continuing to come in strong for new development projects. I know that they're just constantly busy, along with the entire team that's related to project approval. Billable hours contributed by the new construction inspection engineer have helped the city stay ahead on plan review and helped bring in incremental revenue. Police is at 62.7% of budget revenues. This is because Thornton Academy had not, or we hadn't billed Thornton Academy in March for the school resource officer. That payment has been booked in April. When that payment is factored in, police revenues are actually tracking ahead of budget by $33,379, and much of this is attributable to the new parking control officer. We're looking forward to seeing what kind of revenue we can bring in as we get into the busy season. Finally, transfer revenue, 90.2% of budgeted revenues. We did book revenue from the energy and bridge bonds, so the energy and bridge bonds had the portion of projects that were remaining on the bond balance transferred to the general fund to cover related expenses that had occurred in the past. So that's a nice bump for the general fund, and again, we'll hit the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. That's everything that I had.
Thank you. Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Another perfect presentation.
Thank you.
No questions. So, next up, perhaps a less than perfect presentation, but still one heartfelt administrator's update.
I just sent the council an email this evening, just, I wanted to kind of go through the, use this time to go through the process for reviewing consideration to changes to the recommended budget. So there was a link, and hopefully you can all open that link. I provided a snapshot of the mill rate calculator showing a handful of the changes. So you have all received memos with updated calculators that we've posted on the website that include other changes as this process went forward. Remember, we were preparing a budget back in February, then in March, we presented a budget, but of course, as we go through March, April, and into May, there are additional items that we recognize that even council recognizes that we need to fix or amend or change, and more information comes, we become aware of. So we've been updating that calculator with other items for the council to consider. So they're all provided in those memos on the budget website, and they should be items that are discussed as part of our, our time together next week. So the intent here is that next week, or this week, if councillors wish to unfund or modify any approved RADS that I presented as part of the recommended budget, if you wish to support any RADS that are currently not funded or have additional changes to the recommended budget, and Councillor Doyle has provided document yesterday? Yeah, so we'll add that as an item for discussion next week. Please submit them to budget@socomaine.org. We're asking you to do so by the end of the day on Thursday, just so we have some time to make sure all that information is in the calculator, that everything's ready to go for Monday. Administration will also make time available all this week. If you want to come in and meet with me and other staff to talk about budget lines or account lines or any changes that you're thinking of proposing and can help you better understand or, yeah, if you have questions, I'm going to make myself available to you. May 6th, in workshop before the regular meeting, we'll review the full list of changes and time allocated for each item, so that we can discuss it with staff and council. If councillors have additional items they would like to add or discuss at this meeting, of course, that can be considered at that time as well. If members of the public have specific questions related to RADS being discussed, they can submit their questions to budget@socomaine.org. I heard a few questions today during the public hearing, and I will make sure that those are answered and added to the website for Q and A. But if they have, if you're in attendance and would like to provide a slip of paper, we'll make sure that those are added to the website as well before the voting on the 13th. So on the final night of the vote, of the, of the budget, that's May 13th, all items will be provided, will provide language for all items in a motion. First list of items will be the requests above directive that the administrator included as part of the recommended budget. Essentially, there's a, there's a little flow chart that I provided in Excel that shows sort of the process. We'll look at all of the ones that were part of my recommended budget, we'll go down the list on the calculator of those first and make a motion to support. If there's a yes among council, or for councillors vote yes, it'll stay on there. If not, it would defund it or modify it. The second will be those RADS that were not included as part of the recommended budget, and a yes would fund it. And finally, any other items that have been recognized by staff or councillors throughout this process since the presentation in March. So that flow chart should help, and if you have questions, please ask, and we'll put all this up again on the website by tomorrow. I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so before we get into the council discussion and comment, I'd like to ask, are there any questions? are there any questions on what Mr. Sutherland has just covered? To my right, none. To my left, no questions. Okay, then we're at the council discussion and comment section, and I want to just say thank you very much, Councilor Doyle, for that email yesterday identifying very clearly some items that we will be seeing as amendments on the 13th. And so, any council discussion to my right? To my left? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilor Menthorn, seconded by Councilor Smart. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay? The motion passes six zero. We are adjourned. I thank you all very much, particularly the city staff that came in anticipating that we would have a crowd of, of citizens seeking answers to important questions.